It is now seven o'clock. Are we all set with the?
Yes.
Okay. Calling the meeting to order. If I can get myself organized, we'll be all set. I will start by reading the agenda. Some of these things will be taken out of order. We do our best we can with scheduling, but things come up and/or things get long, and then we have to take things out of order. So we'll do the best we can. At 7:00 PM, Community Input. 7:05, Vote to Amend Conservation Restriction at 211 Bellows Hill Road. 7:15, Approve the Fiscal 2020 Payroll Changes. 7:30, A Discussion with the Carlisle Public Schools about the Carlisle Public School issues. The reviewing of the draft Solar RFP and the Cory Building Elevator Replacement. At 8:15, we're going to have the visit of Representative Tammy Gouvea from the -- and she's going to give us a legislative update. 8:45, Review and Approve the 2019 Annual Appointments. 9 o'clock, The Selectment Policy and Guideline Review. We're going to review the policy about computer, email, and Internet use. At 9:15, The Collins Center Report on Organization Efficiency of Town Government. We're going to have a discussion about succession planning. The Recommendation on Page 41. At 9:45, County Administrator's Report. 9:55, The Liaison Reports. 10:10, Approval of Minutes. And 10:15, God Willing, Adjournment.
Should be a lead-up before that.
Great. Is there anybody here for Community Input? Are you here? Oh, you want us to wait? We are expecting Barney, right?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do the voting to amend the conservation restriction at 211 Bellows Hill Road. Is there somebody here for that?
Yes. And Harvey's here. So there. This is a restated and amended conservation restriction. First, I'll show you where it is. It's kind of right in the heart of the Carlisle part of the Esterbrook Woods. It's this property here. The big red area is Harvard University, Esterbrook Woods. This is the Davis Conservation Corridor out here, and then there's other surrounding pieces, the Rockstrom Land here, other pieces of conservation land. So it's in a really critical location. The original restriction on this was -- dates back to 1978, and it was a very loosely worded, difficult-to-interpret, difficult for both the grantor and the grantee to understand. It had no specificity as far as what could be done where on the property. The property was confined to a single-family residence, but that residence could have moved anywhere it wanted, and the rest of it was agriculture and recreation. The new owners of it, it's changed hands. There've been six owners of the property since I've lived in town, starting with Ed and Joan Bartlett, who gave the original restriction. But the current owners ran into some problems in what they wanted to do and agreed to an amendment. And what we've done, here is the property. Now, rather than the whole thing being uniform, you can do sort of anything, anywhere, we've set aside three different zones. There's Building Envelope A, which is this -- I'm colorblind, so I'm not sure. That might be red. I'm not sure.
Pink.
And this is five and a half acres, and this is where the residence must be now. It's got to be confined to this area. There are very few other restrictions on this, aside from the fact that it'd be a single-family residence, which is the core of the original restriction. Then outside of it, we have Building Envelope B, which runs up here, from here to here, and this whole area out here. And that basically matches the original restriction. It's agriculture and recreation, and there can be outbuildings for animals. There can be a tennis court, riding rings. The people who now own it are horse people, and so they're particularly interested in being able to do that. And that is basically the same as what the current restriction does. But then we've added two restricted areas. One up here that runs from the north side of the B envelope up to the border, and another one out here. And those are no building, no activity, really restricted area, of which there was none in the original restriction. And each one has now a public trail. There've been trails running through the property, but never public ones. It's always been by the good wishes of the owners. Now we have a public trail that runs from Bellows Hill over to the Carr Conservation Land. Within the Carr Land, there's a trail that runs through here, also another one that runs north and comes out eventually on School Street. And that trail connects with this one, which runs all the way through here and comes out at the Harvard Land. So we've exchanged, basically, for letting them do whatever they want here, as long as it's single-family, we have public access. That's the basic trade-off. Any questions?
Yes? So, yeah, so the part where they can do whatever they want, that's just like anybody's property. The only restriction is it can only be that one.
Single-family residence.
And I think you said this, because it wasn't really clear to me when reading through this. So the concession, the reason for going through this is they wanted to be able to do kind of whatever they wanted on that five acres.
Right.
And we wanted the trails and the more restrictive on either end.
Which are 12 acres, 12 acres of restricted land plus the public access. And everybody who's looked at it thought it was an excellent trade-off. The state agreed with that.
Where's the driveway for that? Is it on the left there?
The driveway is right here. It's right at the corner of Bellows Hill and Esterbrook.
Right, okay.
And runs in like this to the house.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions? I actually had a couple of questions, because the way it's structured, the restrictions are structured, it's -- and it says, and it does say, "Subject to restrictions elsewhere," sorry, "to exceptions elsewhere."
Right. That's how all restrictions are written. You first say you can't do nothing.
Okay.
And then here's the list of what you really can do.
Okay, but the thing that worried me were the utility structures for Building Envelope A, when there's nothing under, you know, no temporary or permanent structure or facility on, above, or under the premises. And if they--
You're looking at Section A, 2A.
I'm looking at Section A, 2A.
Yeah.
Prohibited Acts and Uses.
Yeah.
That, you know, if Building Envelope A or Building Envelope B needed some utilities, let's say, you know, you have a barn that you want to, you know, put lights in or something, and if it had for some reason to go across, you know, or under any, you know, your non-- your non-A or B things, how could they get that there? Because it doesn't say that they can get, they can get there.
Well, they couldn't. And that's one of the reasons why the restricted areas are at the outer extremes of the property.
Okay. Okay. All righty. That was my major question, was how, you know, you can do forestry, you can cut, you can't cut anywhere except that you can cut on A and B. Okay, got it.
So you can't, well, the other kind of places where you can't cut trees are in the outer edge ones, right?
Not without a very detailed forestry plan that's been approved by--
On the larger--
--the grantee.
And then on the larger piece, and obviously the one where they can do whatever they want, but the larger, lighter red one, they can cut there because that's for agriculture.
They can do it for agricultural purposes.
Reading this, the super-restricted was just those two outer ones?
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I guess, again, and this may be the way it's always done again, but you have, under B, reserved rights and exceptions. One is, you know, the Building Envelope A.
A, yeah.
Two is the Building Envelope B. And three--
And that also applies to A. They can do agriculture on A.
Okay, and then there's also uses, okay, so uses permitted on the entire premises. So it looks like forestry is permitted on the entire premises.
With an approved plan.
So, okay.
If you read through that, you'll see there's got to be a management--
Yeah, there's a management plan in there.
And it's got to be approved by the grantee, which is the town of Carlisle.
Okay, it's, all right, fine. I guess I'm just not used to it, because it says you can't do anything, and then here it says, now you can do site restoration, you can have forestry, and all the things you told me I couldn't do before.
It's kind of like a use tactic, it's kind of like a denial, and then you add what you, what you want to allow.
Yeah, right. I know. Yeah, okay.
The owners of the property didn't understand that at first. It took a while to--
All right. Good. Just as long as this is the way it's supposed to look, I would entertain.
I move, as the Board of Selectmen vote, to approve the amended and related restated conservation restriction granted to the town of Carlisle, Massachusetts, acting by and through its Conservation Commission for the property located at 211 Bellows Hill Road, which the original restriction is recorded with the Middlesex North Registry of Deeds at Book 2324, page 129.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously.
Very nice presentation.
Yes, thank you.
Now it has to go to the state for this. Do you, do you take care of that? And then it will come back to you?
I'll be the second.
Okay, and then finally it has to go up to the Registry of Deeds and all.
Certainly.
The homeowners. We'll let them take it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have the leaders here?
I don't think we need it to--
Thank you.
Did I lose my payroll changes?
Why don't you swear in the members? Right here, Barney. You'll just--
And here's Barney. I've already sworn it.
Square you in the--
Okay, here's Barney.
Hi, I'm so sorry to be late.
You should be.
I was at a book fest that was very successful. Just got dropped off.
You need to sign this. I'll give you my pen, so you don't have to dig up one.
Let me sign this second one before.
Trust, that's what we do.
Perfect. Thank you.
We're just going to make you sit up here.
How'd that go, sir?
I'm sorry, but I can't--
Now that was my pen.
Do you stand?
Thank you.
Oh, we got a stand.
Oh, good, it felt so good.
Yeah, stretching, the seventh finger is stretched. Okay. Do you all solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as members of the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust for the town of Carlisle in accordance with the bylaws of the town and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
I do.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. We have the approval of the fiscal year 2020 payroll changes.
But you have two packets. There's mostly all non-union town employees, a lot of the union employees. It's going to be 2% wage adjustment, 5% active, and therefore 20 wages and salaries. You also show police officers and communications officers whose salaries were determined by a point of, called the bargaining agreement that the board had signed off on, also employment agreements such as Chief Fisher's and my own. I've rejected, but have already been voted. So you're really voting on the non-union employees, the 2% increase to the non-union.
And their steps.
And in some cases, you'll see people getting their third-year step during this fiscal year.
And just for my information, as a new person here, so I see that, like, Anush Coats is on two different budgets, building and finance, and same thing with Nancy Moline, and is that--
They both work--
--just means they work.
Departments.
Got it. Okay. Got it.
And I think just as a note, there are two numbers for each police officer, and we believe those are for shift differential.
Yes.
Thing that probably ought to be footnoted at some point.
Yeah.
That's good. That's a, yeah. That's a question.
And what are the special officers? Or who are the special off-- I mean, what is that?
They're not full-time sworn officers, so they're the folks you see doing the occasional road details and special events, so they're not full-time.
Memorial Day. What do they need extras? Also, like, weekends sometimes, too.
Yeah.
Cover vacations.
Yeah, there's a come, there's a license as well.
Like a motion?
Yes, please.
I move, as the Board of Selectmen vote, to approve the proposed fiscal year 2020 payroll changes dated June 4, 2019, excluding those employees under contractual agreements and those union-represented employees.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. Well, we're 10 minutes early for, but I do see, is Rob here?
Should we? Okay. What do--
Do you want us to start with Jonathan Solar?
Okay, yes, all right. Sorry, Jonathan, I didn't see you.
Yeah.
All right, let's do that one.
I'll have a question for that.
Please.
Judge Jones.
Do you want me to keep passing them along? No, wait. I'll just sign them.
Okay.
Yes.
So I understand that Tim sent you a early draft in your packets. That had most of the changes on it that we've done. We've continued to make a few more over the weekend. The main thing that's missing right now from the draft that you have is changes to the lease and PPA. Yes.
That's what I was going to ask you about.
Town Council would like to take the changes or the lease and the PPA that you've already approved with the changes that you asked for at the last time and the changes that the schools asked for, remove all the wording that's specific to Ameresco and some of the other concerns that Town Council had as Ameresco was going back and forth with them at the last minute, and put that in here. However, Town Council says that it will likely take her through the end of this week and possibly into the beginning of next week to complete all those changes.
I'll just tell you, we didn't approve it because you didn't go forward with it, so we never approved it.
Okay.
I know, because I read everything. I sent all my comments in, and then nothing happened with it, so--
Okay, yes.
Just saying.
It was, yes, there was something funny about how--
Yeah, so that's, in fact, I have--
--the draft modification, this and that.
I have my annotated--
Yeah.
--one from the other one, and I was going to ask you why, why this draft and not one we were looking at with Ameresco.
So that change still has to be done. It is just a lot of work to get it incorporated in. So there have been a few other changes since the draft was received. I don't think Tim forwarded you the latest one, but you might not have the time to look at it. I can go over what's different in that if you want. But mostly what I'm here for is if you guys have specific changes, things you looked at and didn't like, things you wanted to have changed, improved, whatever, I can take notes on that now, and we can fix it up. Oh, one other thing is, I understand there's an additional two-week holding period from the time you send it into the state until it gets officially published. As a result, the dates that you're looking at have already slipped by two weeks, and with the complexity of the changes the Town Council needs to make, I think it slipped another week. So in the two weeks since I last spoke to you, we've slipped three weeks. So it's not a good track record, but we're hoping to fix that.
Maybe hopefully we're getting all done at the front, all this slipping.
Yes, hopefully. Although, yes, we know that's not likely.
Is this going out to the same folks who received the ones previously?
Yes, so I believe it, it gets published with the state, right?
Right. Somehow. So anybody can bid.
So anyone can receive it, and we've been in discussions, we're going to send it to at least the ones that responded to the last one, I think the ones that picked up the packet for the last one. Any other solar companies that anyone knows, we'd be happy to send them an email with it. So, yeah.
If I remember right, the last time we did the RFP, there was something, the way we did it, it kind of bound us to do something with one of them, and it was kind of, it was something about the timing of what we wanted to do, or the pricing, or something that, basically, the way we were going about it in the RFP makes it we had to move forward with the project. Do you remember that, Tim?
I don't know, because you can always cancel procurement if it's in town's disinterest. So I don't think there's anything that would bind you. But there might have been language about certain block groups.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know. In this one, I know there is a specific section that says that the town can cancel this at any point for any reason--
Yeah, I saw that.
--if the town needs it in their interest.
Okay.
Now, this includes things like the ground mount, ground mount component, that kind of, that's not going to be part of the--
No. So you're probably looking at the one that had the edits, because we took the original one and--
Okay.
--looked at the edits. So any of those are crossed out.
The annotations.
Yeah, there's no date on this, so I can't tell.
It's almost--
So probably what we should do is get you a clean copy--
That would be nice.
Yeah.
I hate edit.
And lose the parking lot and not the bus area.
Right, that's in here.
Yeah.
Right, not to mix them up. So we're right up against the timeline, aren't we?
Well, so I was going to say, since we know it's going to take Town Council through probably next Monday to finish up, one possibility for us is to get you a clean copy and have you vote on it at the next meeting. It'll mean we end up delaying essentially another week, but I think it might be in the best interest of the town to get you a clean copy with all of the edits added.
Or any of them really substantial edits?
No. I mean, I can go through the ones that we've made since then, right? There's really, it's almost all just wording things, right, minor adjustments. So would you let me run through them real quick?
I think we should and see if we can't--
Just do it, no?
--approve it. Yeah. Just so we don't lose another week.
Okay. So on the very first page, we added the word canopy to make it clear that we're doing a canopy, not any old array. On the third page, we're dropping the 180 days to 120 days. The reason for that is 120 days keeps it in 2019, and it's going to make it clear to any developer that they are not going to be held to a particular price point if they fall into 2020 incentives. Okay? On page four, we added some additional information informing the town, informing the applicant that town meeting has already approved this.
Okay.
And that we have an intent to finish the process this year in order to allow them to apply for 2019 incentives. Page five, minor typo. Page seven, some wording around the details of what exactly the ISA that we're procuring an ISA, we're applying for an ISA. So there's some wording around that. Page 10, some of the eco-friendly stuff was changed over to be sustainability, so there's better wording. Also on page 10, a similar change in terms of prevent versus mitigate, just wording changes. Wordsmithing it to be right. Page 12, similarly, instead of talking about eco-friendly, we've described it as environmental. Page 13 is the added page that adds the description of the Solar Overlay District that we approved at town meetings, so that the applicants would have that right in front of them. And then there's some minor wording changes on page 14. And those are the only differences since the ones you got in your packet, and we can get you an electronic copy. I think we already got one electronic copy.
Yes, yes.
Good.
So that's the changes that have happened so far. That's been through, I think, four-fifths of the Solar Working Group, something like that. So most of us have commented on it, and believe it's final and get to go on pages like 1 through 13 or whatever. And then the remaining pages after that are all Town Council legalese, so.
Yeah, and after that, honestly, we have another crack at all those leases--
Yes.
--before we sign them. So I'm not, you know, these are draft leases as examples to the people that are, you know, so they don't have to be as perfect--
Right.
--as, you know, so I would be comfortable with, you know, I wouldn't be comfortable with what you showed us here as the original draft leases--
Right.
--because I prefer the one that we've already massaged.
Right.
But--
So, but on pages 1 through 15, do you guys have any changes you'd like us to make to that in terms of either wordsmithing it or anything fundamental, like the canopy should only be here or there, oriented this way?
No.
I don't know. Anything like that?
First of all, I think that's much more in the purview of the school committee than ours, and they've already indicated they don't want it over the buses. Is that correct? Or not?
I don't think they've had a chance to meet since--
No. Okay, well, that's, that's--
But you'll be--
Yes.
--you're working together.
I get to go to both.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any other comments?
Make the motion.
Please do.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request for proposal for the lease of real property for the construction of a solar photogenic canopy array, RFP number PV198-1, with amendments as described tonight and any other amendments that don't materially change the nature of the RFP.
Second.
Any further?
Slight wording, it said 198. I think the 8 was crossed out.
Not on this.
No.
Should just be 19-1.
Okay. Yeah, you also have, the year is 2019, 20,0198. Yeah.
Similar editing.
Yeah. I knew I was feeling old tonight.
And those are the types of edits you can just make.
Okay.
Right.
Editorial is no problem.
Just one other thing I would add. I spoke with the paving contractor--
Ooh.
--for the parking lot. He is willing to do the job next year for the same price--
Ooh.
--which is an alternative to canceling all bids and rebidding--
Yes, that would be--
--next year. We'd have to have a broader conversation with FIDCOM and with the school, but it's, that's a possibility.
Sounds like a good deal.
Yeah, well, we do, it was in a warrant article.
It was a pretty good--
Yeah, and it was a good price.
--part of $20,000. $30,000 less.
Must be expecting the cost to go down.
Maybe. Yeah, okay. So there is a motion on the table. Did I hear a second?
You did.
Okay, good.
Before, I just had a question. So tomorrow, we will be discussing the RFP, so I don't know if we want to include anything about, you know, changes that the school committee might--
Contingent on the--
Well, he said, as long as it doesn't materially change--
It's not materially--
I think we already got one electronic copy.
Yes, yes.
Good.
So that's the changes that have happened so far. That's been through, I think, four-fifths of the solar working group, something like that. So most of us have commented on it, and believe it's final and gets to go on pages like 1 through 13 or whatever. And then the remaining pages after that are all town council leases, so.
Yeah, and after that, honestly, we have another crack at all those leases before we sign them, so I'm not, you know, these are draft leases as examples to the people that are, you know, so they don't have to be as perfect as, you know, so I would be comfortable with, you know, I wouldn't be comfortable with what you showed us here as the original draft leases.
Right.
Because I prefer the one that we've already massaged, but.
So, but on pages 1 through 15, do you guys have any changes you'd like us to make to that in terms of either wordsmithing in it, or anything fundamental, like the canopy should only be here or there, or oriented this way?
No.
I don't know, anything like that?
First of all, I think that's much more in the purview of the school committee than ours, and they've already indicated they don't want it over the buses. Is that correct, or not?
I don't think they've had a chance to meet since we were talking about that.
Okay, well, that's, that's.
But you'll be, you're working together.
I get to go to both.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other comments?
Make the motion.
Please do.
I move that the board of selectmen approve the request for proposal for the lease of real property for the construction of a solar photovoltaic canopy array, RFP number PV-198-1, with amendments as described tonight, and any other amendments that don't materially change the nature of the RFP.
Second.
Any further?
Slight wording, said 198, I think the 8 was crossed out.
Not on this.
No.
Should just be 19-1.
Okay. Yeah, you also have, the year is 2019, 20, 20,198. Yeah.
I knew I was feeling older tonight.
And those are the types of edits you can just make.
Yeah.
Right.
Editorial is no problem.
Just one other thing I would add, I spoke with the paving contractor for the parking lot. He is willing to do the job next year for the same price.
Ooh.
Which is an alternative to canceling all bids and rebidding it next year.
Yes, that would be.
We'd have to have a broader conversation with FinCom and with the school, but it's, that's a possibility.
Sounds like a good deal.
Yeah, well, we do, it was in a warrant article.
It was a pretty good.
Yeah, and it was a good price, yeah.
30,000 less than.
Must be expecting the cost to go down, so.
Maybe, yeah, okay. So there is a motion on the table, did I hear a second?
You did.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Before, I just had a question. So tomorrow, we will be discussing the RFP, so I don't know if we want to include anything about, you know, changes that the school committee might.
Contingent on the, well, he said, as long as it doesn't materially change the RFP.
If it materially changes it, then you'd have to come back afterwards.
Yeah, so we're coming there.
All right, so motion was made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That was unanimous. Have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep it going.
Yeah, thanks for your good work on this.
See what happens when you get involved?
I know.
I know.
Should have known better.
That'll teach ya. You should have learned from Lee.
Yeah, no, my, my wife warned me.
And you didn't listen to her either.
First time ever, ever since I'm on TV.
Okay, yeah, it's 7:31, they have to show up. We're ready for them, yeah.
By the way, discussion.
So, we could sign these while we're waiting for the, the FinCom to come. We are working to get these signatures as, what do you call it, DocuSign format, and what I have arranged to do is meet with Priscilla once a week, or whenever she has things ready, walk through these with her before they get sent to you for DocuSign, so that we know that at least one person has actually looked at them.
Did the DocuSign, did the DocuSign include all of the included material, the scan of it?
Yes, so that you can see it, and have some time to look at it, but it won't be, either that, you know, or if I can't get to it, you know, it'll be, you'll be notified whether I've looked at it or not, but.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Do we just have to click through contract with DocuSign, or did we negotiate a contract? Because we'll be, we would be putting people's salaries and everything in that DocuSign. We'd probably want to have some kind of an agreement where they will protect that data.
Okay, well, it hasn't, this has not happened yet, you know, regardless, I will be going once a week anyway to be reviewing these, because after being interviewed twice by the accountant, you know, the auditor, you know, try, you know, what do you do to prevent fraud, and it's, oh, well, we signed all this, you know.
They're going to scan all the bills, so it's all going to be electronically.
Yes, every single, you see them?
That's great, as the, once you guys get that going, the school's going to do it the same way then, and they'll go, just go, the second signer to.
You and I need to have tea and talk about that.
Who sees your old stuff?
I'm not going to, so I'm not signing these tonight, I will sign them tomorrow.
We've already signed them down here.
Oh, you have already signed them, sorry, I didn't look at that.
Luke needs to sign some.
Oh, you did, you said it was happening when you're on the end of the table.
Okay, all right, so who do we have here?
Pass these two down.
Yeah.
Wow, our audience, yeah, tripled.
All right, to talk about the Corey Building elevator replacement, welcome, not, not, no, the news is not welcome. You guys are welcome, but the news is not welcome.
Did I miss one? Okay. Sorry. Okay, thanks.
Okay, yeah.
This is quite a major project to do, the lead time of most of the equipment is three or four months. So we're going to be developing, I would say, into the fall.
Do you want to give the backstory a little bit, in case everybody doesn't know?
So, I guess I can jump, so, as long as I can remember, so that's two years, I'm in town, the elevator has been on the long-term capital plan for replacement, it's outdated, its useful life has gone by, and replacement parts have become difficult to get, and when David Flannery's here, he continuously said we need to take action on this, but for the last couple of years, we felt we really wanted to get as much life out of the elevator as possible, so we kicked that can down the road as far as we could, hoping we could do it for another two to five years, but that all came to an end a couple of weeks ago, when the hydraulic system went out, and the elevator just doesn't operate anymore. Part of the problem with the hydraulics is, it's filled with hydraulic oil, so we also now have this oil seeped into the base of the elevator system, and the oil couldn't be located, so that means it's gone into the foundation.
Somewhere.
So there's also going to be some other costs to go along with cleaning up this base as we try to get the elevator operating again. But as Rob pointed out, we've taken some, brought in an associated elevator, given us a couple of estimates, first was an estimate on just replacing the hydraulic system, which is about $65,000, and then we asked for the estimate to replace the elevator, which is what we've been looking to do for the last number of years. That came back at a cost of about $95,000, so it's $95,000 plus the $65,000, and then there's some other costs, I think Rob mentioned around mitigation, and checking the soil, and checking the water, and making sure that everything is safe, but not to the leaking of hydraulic fluid. So we're looking at a, at a price, an estimate around 175, 1E. We had a meeting with Tim early last week, and we talked about approaching our insurance company, so I think we've got a claim in with the insurance company now to see if we can get some of the funds back from there. We had a talk about what funds might be available in this year, and this year's, so that we could possibly put that towards the cost of this, because we do need to get out ahead of this, this is a four, probably a four-month process. We have graduation authorization, so we're not going to have an elevator for graduation, but we would like to have an elevator by October, and before we, the snow takes effect. So we thought we'd come forward and see what we could do to make this work, so we can have an operating elevator in deeper standards, and.
Is there, is this the only elevator company?
The elevator company that services the district and the schools' elevators, since they are our vendor, but we already have, brought them out, they're the ones that actually decommissioned the elevator when they came out, and were able to let the elevator tower out and check out, you know, investigate that they had troubleshoot everything. They're on the state bid list as a vendor, with AIG's office and everything like that too already, so Tim was saying we wouldn't have to, it's an emergency repair, emergency replacement, and the fact that they're already our vendor, and they're a vendor on the state bid list, we don't have to put up the bid. So the only difference you would probably get if you put up the bid would be a shipping company that might have different finishes for the interior or something, you know, but the mechanic parts are all independent pricing.
Would there be a difference in delivery?
Not necessarily. In this company, they're actually, their modernization team was 12 months out, but they, since they are the ones that, with the service company on record, they are able to like reorganize their, their crew and have them ready for this process if we do pick them, if we do sign them up, so that we have that crew.
Something.
Sort of 12 months ago.
It's not, it's not replacing the entire elevator, it's just replacing a lot of the components and the wiring and.
It's replacing the, well, the hydraulic jack for one, that's the main structure that drives the elevator, but it's also all the electrical connections. For the switch, you know, for the transfer switch, for emergency power, for, with the fire line, you know, on each landing, we have to have different recall switches put in.
Put another, a phone?
We just put a new phone in.
Oh, you just put in a phone.
But it does, it does include another new phone, I guess, but.
So it's, it's kind of refurbishing it, but it's not actually replacing the actual box?
I'll leave something in the voice so we can be new.
The box is the same?
The box would be the same, but it'll be all, it'll be all.
The rails and everything are going to be new too, as I read, yeah.
I think, I think this elevator needs a new phone, can we have your old one?
Absolutely.
Are there any antiquated parts that would remain, because I know the issue with replacing the parts, all of them go out?
Yeah, so the whole control panel would be replaced too, and right now, that's all like the quick black and relays, the 1980s, so now everything now is digital scroll. So you're going to have a system that's going to be smoother, it's going to be, it's not going to be as hurt, jerky when it's going up and down, and things like that.
Is there a museum, if you didn't buy it?
I doubt it, it's not that old, unfortunately.
So what kind of length will that, will that give the elevator in follow this refurbishment is done, what is projected?
You probably have a 25, 30 years, something like.
So how do we pay for it?
Yeah, that's, that's the big question de jour, so I think.
Anything else?
Okay. Bonnie?
Bonnie?
What's our strategy?
Well, we have a couple of different options, and what we're looking to do is keep as many options open as we, as we can. So we don't think that covering this through year-end transfers entirely is possible. We're not sure what the insurance availability, how much they're going to cover of this, I'm sure it's not going to be the full, you know, repair. But there's another option that could be available to us with the, with the vote of the board of selectmen. So we did talk to the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, and I think Sean Crumlin actually gave us the approval, that if the board declared this situation as an emergency or disaster that needed to be addressed immediately, you can deficit spend for the project, much like you can for snow and ice. So it's the same essentially process, it's a little bit of a different section in Mass General Law, but it will, it would allow us to deficit spend for the project, and then at the end of the year, in setting the tax rate for next year, we would raise it like we would a snow and ice deficit on the tax recap. We don't anticipate needing all of this project to be covered as a, as a deficit spending authorization, but there might be a component, so we could transfer for part of it, we could get insurance coverage for part of it, and if there's any amount remaining that we couldn't cover, then we could, you know, raise it on the recap if the board votes to do this. It's just leaving our options open, and where we're not, we haven't closed our books yet, we don't know what we'll have available for transfers at year-end. I know the school was looking at, you know, if they had any funding, they're, they're in the same process that we are, we're not at year-end yet. So we're looking at this as really just to hedge and give, leave ourselves in the best position to deal with the issue of that.
Bonnie, is there a difference between doing it now, when we're still in fiscal 19, and doing it on July 1st, and fiscal 20?
In order for the school to be able to execute a contract, we have to have the funding secured now, so they won't be able to sign off on a contract to repair the elevator in 19, unless.
From a town planning standpoint, though?
Well, you don't have an appropriation in fiscal 20 either, so you're kind of, you're better off doing this now than you would be in fiscal 20, because again, you can't, you can't execute a contract without the funding secured.
And what are the compliance issues for being other people?
Right now, we have, you know, ADA requirements, and then we have students, you know, a student has to go outside the building now and around the perimeter of the building just to go to gym class. And it'll also be the same thing for anybody visiting the school, like the graduation's going to be indoors on Thursday, where, you know, it's going to be all tough with people coming upstairs and not having the elevator to use now, and they have to go around and go up the ramp and.
It's just the only elevator, there's no freight elevator in?
No.
No other elevator?
All the way up.
See, are we asking about the consequences for not combining?
Like penalties or?
Sure, that, that's not a bad idea. But then there is the gym, and then there's the, there's the work that's going to be done on the, on the stadium, and it's the form, we will not be open in the wintertime, right? That is, the RFP is out of that, we'll wait to hear back, so we're, we still have hopes that that project will be started, if not completed this summer. There's no relationship between the two, though? No relationship. Except for maybe more kids going down to that area, but once that's open. Yeah, we'll have more kids going down once the Formia Studio opens up and all our band students, we'll be going downstairs, but they're not going down. It's another reason, we really need to have a function, even combined, and once the winter hits, it becomes a bigger problem. It does, right? Rams are not. We can get through October, I think October is the time we could struggle through, but November, it won't be a problem.
If we do it now, then we can see if there's any money this year that we could use, we can see if there's any money next year that we could use.
Yes, spread it out.
And then borrow whatever the, we're, we're.
We can minimize the impact in the fiscal 20.
Yeah, by doing it now.
It could just be the deposits now, for the contract, you know, that shows like 20% of each one, so maybe it was like 45, 50,000 to exercise the hydraulic, you know, the system repair in the purchase of the modernization equipment.
Just getting the votes secured to deficit spend allows them to execute the contracts. How we actually fund it will be determined in mid-July.
Right. Do you have language drafted for us for motion that, you know, that, what it should look like?
Do what you want us to do.
Because you have a, it's like this, the book and verse, and, you know.
I would say that it would look something like that, to request the board's vote in accordance with Mass General Law 44, section 31.
I can try it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Do you already have one of these? 4431, you know, deficit special spend without appropriation.
I moved that the board of selectmen pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter 44, section 31, the board selectman Carlisle, declare an emergency due to catastrophic failure of the main elevator at Corey Building of the Carlisle Public School, and request of the state that we are able to deficit spend as per the letter from, drafted for Tim, from Tim Goddard, dated June 12, 2019.
Second.
Any further discussion? Questions? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That's unanimous.
We just can't get ahead of this stuff, can we?
We just declared ourselves an emergency.
We have a chance to, the rant elevator is 22 years old, so we could plan for what year we would like to put that in.
Associated elevator, oh, just looking at, Corey wanted to, to give me an assessment of the grand one, just knowing that.
Just to know. If I get ahead, I meant spend less money.
I'm going to use our expertise if we don't let it fail, so.
I was going to throw it at me, so I'll wear it. Had them some history, and issue a little bit more for two years. The decision would always come back when we're looking at our long-term caps priorities, and the long-term caps decision had always been to kind of fund the luck on us, and so here we are, dealing with that.
Adelaide.
It's just worth pausing.
Well, now, I know on long-term caps, ironically, who said next year's the year?
For the elevator.
We actually do it, because I mean, we had this conversation again, and, you know, I said, well, this has to be taken care of, we, we, as far as we probably can with our lock, it needs to be, it needs to be replaced, and as a committee, from the vote, as a committee, we discussed, yeah, this has got to be a priority for next year's, and then I went to school for something and saw the caution tape, and was like, oh, ran out of, ran out of road.
I mean, it's never, there's not, never an abundance of options, I understand, under the long-term cap considerations, but, you know.
So I'm hoping to have the insurance adjuster come up for this, I've been there, and actually give you some numbers, I forward the insurance company, both these votes, so they have what we're looking at for a total expense measure, and see what they say.
Is it realistic to think the insurance company, does this qualify under?
I spoke with the account executive last week, and she thinks it's covered under equipment failure, fingers crossed, but it wasn't, if that's the case, but.
Couldn't we have gotten the whole building paid for?
Building failure.
Well, we have maintenance records, so it's not because it was neglected or anything, so.
We repaired it.
It was actually used, tested and inspected, and passed, maintained, well, they, I put that in my narrative, so they should remember we do, they need to know, like, you know, it's not public, you have to do this in 20 years.
Yeah.
No, and we, and I remember in our discussions, it was the things that we were out of compliance that we need to be corrected, we could correct, we were doing those things, so it just was old, and then the narrative was, if the key parts go, we can't get replacements, and if the wrong thing fails, then we're out of luck. I seem to recall that, the worst thing failing would be the hydraulics. The really worst thing would have some fluid we can have in the hydraulic.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys all for coming down.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's our role, what's FinCom's role, is it to work with the director to figure out how to best come up with a funding recommendation? What's our committee's role at this point?
Well, you, if you are going to do year-end transfers, then you will have approved these with the board of selectmen. If it's pure deficit spending, the board of selectmen have approved that. So you will likely have a role in it.
In the transfer.
Even if not a deficit spending, in dealing with the fact that we.
Sooner or later.
We're already starting to do that.
Great.
Thank you.
We still need to get that date, and I'll get back, but it wasn't this week anyway, so I thought, okay, I'll see how things shake up next week.
Great to see you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Hey, we're ahead of things.
Right, we are ahead of time. So, and seeing no Tammy, what I'd like to do is just go ahead and start doing some of these annual appointments. And I think we'll just start, well, we're not going to start with the Affordable Housing Trust, we're going to do that after.
Two weeks.
After two weeks. Because, although there are, there are three, four letters of interest, but I think that discussion has to happen next week, or next meeting. I think we should appoint the agricultural commissions. There are three letters of interest, and there will still be one vacant associate, but I think we could at least get the three regular members.
There's still a vacant associate?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I heard that Desiree Ball might be moving shortly.
She confirmed that last night.
Oh, she did?
Yeah, at the Ball Committee.
Okay. So we'll be losing her as well, but she's also an associate, so we're going to need to be looking for a couple of associates. So.
So how do you do this? You need a motion to accept?
A motion to appoint.
These three people. I'll make a motion to appoint Andrew Rogers, Concord, do we have to say the address?
Yeah.
185 Concord Street, Steve Huberman, 761 Concord Street, and Kyle Boninfont, 47 Hart Farm Road, to the Agricultural Commission for the Town of Carlisle, Massachusetts.
To a term to expire.
Oh, to a term to expire in, these are.
2022.
Why are we doing 2019? Yeah, because that's.
That's because their term expired, and that's going to be.
2022?
Updated to 22.
2022.
They're in bold face because they are expiring.
Right. To a term to expire in 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next one is the Audit Committee. We need to wait for them to recruit because we don't have any, oh, yes. The next one is Board of Registars.
We do not want to at least just have those two people.
No.
They don't expire.
They don't expire, so.
Simon moved.
Actually, no, but, oh, it's moot. We don't have to wait for recruiting. No, it says one vacant position because Deb Belanger is not there, that's why.
But did you say Simon Platt?
Yeah, yeah, he's my neighbor. Well, he was my neighbor.
He's moving?
He's gone.
He's moved?
Yeah, they're gone, yeah.
Oh, he's moved?
Yep.
So he's not there either?
They got two.
So there's two vacancies. So could you make a note of that, Jen?
We're seeing this trouble.
And update it? Okay. On the Board of Registars, we had a memo from Mary, the clerk, saying she has confirmation from Kay Hurley that she's interested. However, she needs to be nominated by the Democratic Town Committee, they're meeting on Thursday, so we have to wait till the 25th in order to put her on because she has to come, she has to be affiliated with a major party. Okay. Energy Task Force, we need to, we reappoint Young, Bentley, and Zog, and appoint Jonathan DeCock for a new term, for his first term. And I'm wondering why this term is only one year on this committee? Is there some reason?
It's only a one-year committee.
I know.
I don't, I don't, it way predates me, but it's just, it's a one-year, it's a one-year committee.
We don't know why. Okay, we can talk about.
The charter has to change for that to go to something more than a year?
Personally, I think that the shorter it is, the more likely are we.
Get people to sign on.
Because they think they'll do it for a year, and then they just stay over.
Yeah.
Okay, with no term limits.
I know about that. I think it was because it was a task force rather than a committee, it was originally a one-year deal.
Ah, that's possible, okay.
That's the record that we have.
All right.
Maybe we just leave it that way.
So everybody has to be reappointed, except for the three that are leaving.
Dan Cook is leaving?
Yes.
The car.
Yes.
And Bob Clark.
And Bob Clark.
Okay.
Who's the new person?
Jonathan DeCock. Okay, can I have a?
Do we have an address for Jonathan?
It's Oak Knoll.
Oak Knoll, yes.
I don't know what number.
I moved that the Carlisle Board of Selectmen appoint to the Energy Task Force Robert Zog, 923 North Road, Deb Bentley, 128 Heald Road, Helen Young, 623 Heald Road, and Jonathan DeCock from Oak Knoll to a term to expire June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Appoint tonight, let me see, Celebration Committee, I think we can appoint the four people who have said they would like to be appointed or reappointed. And I think this, we're going to be missing a couple of people, a couple, because there's supposed to be five, and we have four, so there's one vacant spot. For anybody out there in TV land who's thinking about, you know, joining any committees, this would be a great place to get your feet wet. It's, you know.
Meet with the people.
Meet twice a year.
Meet twice a year, and.
And at celebrations.
At a celebration, exactly. So there you go.
I moved that the Carlisle Board of Selectmen appoint to the Celebrations Committee for a term of one year to expire June 30th, 2020, Scott Evans of 299 Heald Road, Doug Stevenson, 271 Cross Street, Heidi Herring, 322 West Street, and Laura Mullins at 75 West Street.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Conservation Commission, we can, we can reappoint tonight, the two members who have indicated that they would like to continue for an additional term.
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint to the Conservation Commission for a term of three years to expire in 2022, Angela Verge, 29 Indian Hill, and Helen Young, 623 Heald Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think the Conservation Restriction Advisory Committee can be reappointed tonight.
I move that.
It's all of them?
Yes.
The Carlisle Board of Selectmen appoint to the Conservation Restriction Advisory Committee for a term of one year to expire June 30th, 2019.
2020.
2020. Mark Lemire, 374 Rutland Street, Jay Thomas Brownrigg, 5 Acton Street, Jonathan Stevens, 871 Maple Street, Nancy Cowan, 36 Russell Street, Melinda Lindquist, 83 Acton Street, Wayne Davis, 739 Concord Street, and Ken Hart, 64 Est.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Community Preservation Committee.
Cranberry Bog.
What happened to the Cranberry Bog?
Yeah, Cranberry.
Oh, that used.
Because I'm adding a couple.
Ah, okay.
Sorry, that we had in our packet last week.
Oh, yeah, it's not here.
Means it mustn't exist anymore.
Yes. So we had, we have one member with the term expiring from ConsCom, and one member with the term expiring from Historic Commission, and we're going to need one member from Housing. And the reason I have this on there is because we need to get applications on file for those three, so that we can appoint them at our next meeting. So do you want me to give you that note? I will give you that note in a second. And then there's Conservation Commission? You don't have that one either, I bet?
Nope.
Okay. And there's, and we're member, okay, we have two members, and we don't have any applications for those either.
Yeah, we did ConsCom.
Oh, we did? Oh, we did ConsCom, sorry, I should have made, because this is my last week, so, all right, there we go, all right. Cranberry Bog, did you have that one in your thing?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we could reappoint that tonight.
Obviously going so early.
Yeah, well, they say they have an application on file, so that means it there?
Yeah, no, Veebu definitely isn't.
Who isn't?
Veebu, Walia.
Okay.
And I don't think Deb is.
So he isn't. We want that, so I'm sorry.
That's fine, but yeah, I know, I know for a fact Veebu doesn't want to, but, okay.
We can put him on, or he can not come.
Yeah. Yeah, because there's a different, there's a different person from ConsCom on, Alan, whoever we appointed at ConsCom the last time.
Making shankers.
Yeah.
Alan Anger.
No, he failed.
Can we do this one later?
Yeah, let's do this one. Let us get this, could you please check this one?
Yeah, it's going to be different, yeah.
What about John Lavery? He's been attending all your meetings.
Yeah, he, well, he went to the last one, I haven't seen him at any of the others.
He's attended three that I know of, but I don't know.
I don't think.
Or he said he did, okay.
Maybe, maybe.
Let's check on that one.
So we're not, we're not doing that tonight.
Repoint the Cultural Council tonight.
I move that we appoint Jennifer Sidlin of Wolf Rock Road to a three-year term of the Cultural Council to expire June 30th, 2020.
Second.
2022.
2022.
2022. Yes. I said two in my mind.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? So there's.
We think that I may be not allowed to reappoint next year, you see the second term.
Are you looking at the year control or? Oh, Cultural Council.
One-year interval before serving, oh, and then they, okay. All right. There's, there is, by the way, another committee that has, yeah, that I was going to ask about term limits, but, okay. So this one's done, and we voted it, okay. Council on Aging, we're still.
Did you skip Deer Control?
No, because this is again from last week.
Oh, okay.
And I'm, again, I'm asking, this is more for me to ask Jen why we don't have any letters, applications on file, there's a whole bunch, one, two, three, four, five, six.
No, no, he didn't come in this year, but he did come up and stand over that.
And do we want to invite Carrie Kissinger, I guess is another question, to become a member of that? Because I think he would be a good member for this, for the Council on Aging.
I don't have the paper, is there?
Oh, that, we had it last week.
Is there space?
Yeah.
Nine members.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Two, four, six, eight, nine, they have nine, and then they have four associates. You could go on as an associate.
And of the nine, two, three. There are two that are.
Three.
Three.
That are regular members, Jerry Lerman, Abba Singhal, and Bob Luoma.
Yeah. Well, I'm just thinking.
Do we know if they all want to re-up?
Well, we don't.
David Klein said they did.
Oh, they all want to re-up?
They already met and organized.
Okay. All right, well, never mind then.
That's right.
It was just an idea, I just thought he would.
So you want us?
It would be a nice place to slot them in.
You want us to appoint those tonight, these three? Or wait?
I think we need to wait until we know that.
It's always nice to have a letter.
It is.
I want to have the letters, yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to give these back to you?
No, I want to give it to Jen, so that she bugs them.
You can say Kate made you do it.
Deer Control Committee, I was not planning on taking care of this tonight. I would like us to think about whether we want to change the name of this committee, if there are any other, you know, first of all, we have also no, as far as I know, no letters or applications on file. So I think, I'd like to hold this for next week, so when we have a little more time.
Does that make sense? I think I had emailed you about this, they would really like to get going so that they can start the, start the process with the public. I asked them to hold off meeting until after we reappointed them.
Actually, I don't think I got the email.
There was an email that I said, yeah, kind of like a.
Oh, that, okay.
These are the things that I promised people?
All right.
Well, they don't need to be reappointed, because they've got another couple of weeks on the.
Right, so I guess what I would like is, you know, what I was suggesting was that we meet jointly with them, so that we can give them some direction, you know, give them feedback on what we've heard and what we think from town meeting, so that when they get their first meeting, they've gotten that next direction from us, so.
Can we invite them then for our agenda of the 25th, and then we can appoint them at the same time?
Yeah, and I had said that we were trying to do it in June, so.
Yeah, there we go, we'll still be in time.
And Todd had reached out to me, because have we, are our liaison assignments done?
He sent us their letters.
Oh, he did?
Last week, right?
Yeah. Could you bring those?
He emailed you and I, didn't he?
Yes.
Well, if we have the letters, then let's do the appointment tonight.
He did give the letter.
Oh, okay, all right. I'm only going, I can only go by what I have here, because I didn't, I wasn't in that loop, okay.
Before we do that, though, I have a question then, because Todd reached out to me thinking that we were appointing somebody from the BOS to be on this, is that right?
Should be determined. Yes.
Except for me being the liaison?
Yeah, BOS has a full-time member on it.
Yes, well, got it. But if you're the liaison.
Do you want me to do both?
It's one and the same.
That's one and the same.
Okay, okay. So I do need to be appointed then?
If you go to the meeting twice.
No, I'm happy to go.
You get two votes.
Todd was confused, thinking.
Yes.
Okay, so I do need to be appointed.
Yes.
All right.
I move that the Carlisle Board of Selectmen appoint to the Deer Control Committee for a one-year term. The following people, Todd Thorson, 301 Hanover Street, Alex Para, 31 Bellows Hill The following people, Todd Thorson, 301 Hanover Street, Alex Para, 31 Bellows Hill Road, Jonathan DeCock, 130 Oak Knoll Road, John Pajov Van Nick, 93 Clark's Farm Road, John Keating, Keating, 133 Forest Park Road, Sergeant Scott Barnes of the Carlyle Police Department, and Barbara T. Arnold of the 225 Lowell Street, as the Board of Selectmen representative, to terms to expire June 30th, 2020.
Good work. Any more discussion?
Second.
Second? We had a second from Luke already, sorry. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is taken care of, but I do wanna keep this on a future agenda, maybe when they come.
Two weeks from now.
Two weeks from now, and I do, we'll talk about whether they're a working group or a committee, and what their charge is.
Yeah, well, I think unless Tim puts it together, it's a committee.
No, the board appoints them.
Yeah, it's a committee. We just made it a committee.
Well, it says, the working, the first thing in the Deer Control Committee says, "The working group will collect information," which is why I was questioning what-
Yeah, it's like the title, so it's just, we need to clean that up.
We need to clean this whole thing up.
So the Deer Committee, it should be a working group?
No, it's a committee.
No, no, it is a committee.
It is a committee, okay.
But we need to clean the, the charge up.
So we don't call it the working group.
Yeah, the only other thing, though, is I thought the citizen-at-large was supposed to be a non-Hunter.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
I, I mean, I thought we had, and it's obviously, it's not in the charge itself, the charter itself, but I, I thought we had significant discussion about that.
Is John Keating a hunter? Are you telling me?
Yeah.
And I will say that while I was running for the office of Board of Selectmen, that I had four or five different people who were not hunters, who were concerned about the way the pilot project went, that I think it would be very, a good idea just to have their, somebody representing a non-Hunter on, officially on the committee. And I'd be happy to recruit someone, since I've been in conversation with four of them since then, if, if that makes sense, but that would mean we'd have to hold off.
Already done.
I know, we just did it.
Well, we can always-
We can-
Or only make this an eight-person?
Our discussion with them, we can talk about this, and if we want to, we can change the charter to be more members.
Yeah. Right.
We have the power.
We do.
So maybe we should just have the minutes, if you wouldn't mind, have the minutes show, that we want to encourage the Deer Control-
Excuse me, but I, I don't see why it has to be the citizen-at-large that should not be the hunter. I mean, we have a Board of Health member who is, who's, Alex Para, I can guarantee you, is not a hunter. Jonathan DeCock, I doubt is a hunter. So there's a bunch of non-hunters on there already. It's not like it's stacked with hunters. But we can have that discussion when they come.
Jerry's a non-Hunter. Are you a non-Hunter?
Technically, yes. But, yes.
Okay.
I mean, being a non-Hunter and being against hunting are two different things.
Right, I'm not against hunting. I know how to-
All right.
I'm a firearm, I know how to bow hunt, I mean, not bow hunt, you know, whatever you call it, rifle hunt, but.
All right.
So the, the conclusion is, we're gonna, we have appointed these people, and we are going to then, in two weeks, have them, some portion of them come and talk with us about the future of the committee?
Committee.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
On the Finance Committee, Jen, the charge is not correct, because it still says, "Members may hold no other elective or appoint-of-town positions involving expenditure of town money during their terms of office." So that's from the old bylaw, and I don't have a copy.
It's changed, yeah.
It got changed. All right. Let us put this aside, because I see our guest is here, and I'd love to-
I realize I left my notes in the desk, though.
Oh, you wanna go out and get them?
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. No problem, we have them.
I usually use just this, but I actually forgot.
That's okay, all right.
I follow, guys.
And, and what I'm also gonna ask you, Jen, to do is, as we did on the Cultural Council, where there's a term limit, or a number of term limits, there is a number of three consecutive terms that FinCom members should not serve, and I have no idea who, where anybody is on this. So before we, I'd like to hold this one off till the 25th as well.
Find out whether there's anybody whose term is out.
Uh, yes.
Perhaps Jerry got out, who turned out.
Yeah, but, and we have, I know one member who left town, so we've got his term, but I don't know if there are anybody else.
They're interviewing candidates tonight, so perhaps by next time-
Yeah, which is fine, but, but in the meantime, I would also like, Jen, if you could add the info about who's got what term. And here's my, here's your notes on those two committees.
Three consecutive terms, so Jerry could come back.
I'd like to appoint the Historical Commission tonight.
I move that Carlyle Board of Selectmen appoint to the Historical Commission for a three-year term Jeffrey Freeman of 245 Rockland Road, and Kathleen Keller of 14 Westford Street, to terms to expire June 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This, this one's all three-year terms, and for some reason, all the terms coincide on the same year. This is also something I'd like to see if we could sort out, but we don't have to do any-
Appointing.
Appointing this, this week, but I'd like to kinda get those staggered a little, so.
Okay. I can ask, I sent out an email to ask him.
Land stewardship has-
You have any needs to appoint here?
We have one. Can we, can we do land stewardship? And then we'll stop.
So this is a new person. I move that the Carlyle Board of Selectmen appoint to the Land Stewardship Committee Rhonda Michaud of 50 Hart Farm Road, for a term of three years, to expire June 30th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. That's also announced.
Welcome again.
Why don't you come and have a seat at our table?
I don't think she looks like it.
Can we turn one of these mics?
Yep, you can have mine.
Excellent. Thank you.
Excellent.
Hello.
These don't have by, they've-
For the-
TV.
Great.
Huge audience that are watching.
It's good to see you again.
Oh, it's good to see you. How is everybody?
Good.
Good? Excellent.
Enjoying your new office.
Great. Yes. Yes. So my understanding is you'd like some updates. I can give you some sort of high-level updates, and I meant to call you, I, we have to talk. I'm so excited.
Good to meet you.
I'm Tammy Govea, State Representative for 14th Middlesex, for those who are listening. And my understanding is you wanted an update from me on kinda what's been happening up at the State House, and then I think there were some very specific questions about some progress that we're trying to help the town make with particular issues. So if there are other things that you wanted me to talk about, please let me know, or interrupt me, or we can address that at the end. Does that sound fair? Okay. So, as you know, I was sworn in on January 2nd of this year, and it's been a very busy session up at the State House, which I'm finding great joy in. The last legislative session, the House took up one bill, and then didn't really take up any bills for another eight or nine months. This session, we've already voted on a number of bills, really important bills, which is really great, banning conversion therapy, lifting the cap on kids. We'll be voting on some other things tomorrow as well, and we have a Constitutional Convention on the Millionaire's Tax tomorrow. It's the second day of the Millionaire's Tax for the Constitutional Convention. So things are moving along. You know, as you probably, possibly know, there are over 6,000 bills that get filed every single session. By Massachusetts Constitution, every single bill gets a hearing in a primary committee. I'm on four different committees. Most of my committees have had at least some hearings, some have had multiple hearings, and the fourth committee is just starting to do listening sessions. And those four committees that I sit on are Export Development, which doesn't have a whole lot of bills that adhere, so it's a little bit more of a quiet committee compared to Children, Families, and Persons with Disabilities. So I sit on that committee, it's had a number of hearings, multiple bills that it's heard. The third committee that I sit on is Mental Health, Substance Use, and Recovery, so that's the one that's going out and doing listening sessions. It hasn't had any formal hearings yet. And then the fourth is Professional, Consumer Protection and Professional Licensor. So a lot of the local liquor, you know, home rules go to that committee, anything that sort of impacts consumer protection and alcohol licenses and professional licensure across the board. And that's also had a number of hearings. I filed 19 pieces of legislation and cosponsored over 300, and the way I made my decision around which bills I would cosponsor had to do, first I prioritized what constituents asked me to cosponsor. So that was my first pass. And then the second pass was advocacy organizations that reached out and said, you know, "We'd really like you to support this, this bill." And what it means for me as a cosponsor is, all of those bills, I will, at the very least, write a letter of support indicating why I support that particular piece of legislation. And if I can go in person, I will go in person. Some days up at the State House, there are five hearings that are happening at the same exact time, and even people who are on those committees have to juggle going from one committee hearing to another, so it's not always physically possible to be able to present, you know, make a case for particular bills. So that's sort of the, the high level. I spend four days in the district and try to only spend three days up at the State House. I really feel it's, it's important for me to stay connected to the constituents in the 14th Middlesex. I have office hours, try to do them twice a week. Sometimes we have to change the schedule depending on other conflicts that I have in meetings, but typically I'm in Carlisle every other Friday morning at Ferns, from 7:00 to 9:30, 7:00 to 9:00, depends on, the one in Carlisle, to be quite honest, is the one I get probably the most people to. Average about nine people, and people come from all over the district. It's not just Carlisle residents, so it's really quite fun, to be honest. And then I have them also on the alternating Friday morning in Chumpsford, at their town hall, and then in Concord and Acton on Monday nights. So that's the way I try to stay in touch. I'm also, we have a newsletter, we keep our, my website up to date. I have a calendar on my website, which says what meetings I'll be in, and where I'll, you know, sort of be when I'm in the district, so that people can try to track me. And for those of you who are on social media, I'm very active. I sort of use social media as a way to talk about, that's okay, the, you know, sort of the day-to-day interactions that I have with constituents, things I'm learning. If I go for a site visit, or a tour of schools, or a tour of an organization, I talk about and amplify what's going on in those organizations. And I also, in chambers, when we're voting and taking votes, or even within, even within, within committees, I will, you know, post what we're taking up in terms of issues and how we're voting, as a way to try to increase transparency and access to what's going on up at the State House. And I've gotten feedback that people really like that, that they find that it's a useful way to sort of feel like they're a little bit more conversant in what's going on up at the State House, because other than that, it can be a black box. And then the other thing that I do is, I've started to do, is every Monday morning, I record what I'm going to be doing for that next week, when my office hours are, the kinds of meetings I'll be going to, just so people have a sense of, what is it really like as a state rep? What are the kinds of things and issues and organizations that we're visiting, and what are some of the issues that we're taking up? So people can really understand what's happening with that. So that's sort of what goes on in a nutshell, as state rep. But would love to hear what questions you have, what concerns you have, and kinda go from there.
Okay, open it up to the board. Luke?
Oh, I don't know.
Besides, where's, where's my meal?
I thought you were doing that when I said social media, which sometimes I feel that way as well, so.
Well, Tammy, I'd love to hear your thoughts on where things are around the changing of the education formula?
Yeah.
And what that might mean for Carlisle. I attended the Mass Municipal Association session for new board members on Saturday, and is it Lewis, Senator Lewis?
Yes.
Yeah.
He's the Senate Chair, yes.
Yeah, Senate Chair on this committee. So it sounded, he was making it sound like he thought that there would actually be an agreement and a vote this year.
Yes, absolutely, that's-
Would be phenomenal, since it's been under discussion for I don't know how many years. So what's your take on that?
Yeah, that's the same thing that I'm hearing, that we will have a vote on the education bill. We're hearing that it could come out in the next couple of weeks even. If not, for the most part, the, the House doesn't usually meet in August, so then we're talking September. I think it would be great if we could take that issue up and vote on it in June or July. I think it also has pretty important implications for the budget, which is the other reason why it needs to be taken up, if we really wanna try to pass a budget by July, which is usually the goal. So that's what I'm hearing, is that, that we should anticipate a bill around that. I think the question is, what's in that bill, and how does it impact, you know, various communities, whether you're Springfield, or Lowell, or you're Carlisle, or Chumpsford, or Duxbury, or Drake. So I don't know what those numbers look like, because we haven't seen anything yet, and I, nothing's been leaked to us, or anything like that. So I am curious to see how they address some of the issues that I think became sticking points in the last session, which were around the low-income aspect and English language learner. That was my understanding from Chairwoman Peish. When I first came on board as a state rep, I, I had a meeting with her to understand, you know, what were the sticking points around this, because I know people in the 14th Middlesex really do care about what's happening with this funding formula. And one of the things she said to me is that, you know, they, they spent a lot of time focused on special education and healthcare, and that left less room and less time to really, I think, come up with what would work in, for multiple communities around the ELL and the low income. So I think there is an intentionality to really focus on that, and a lot of state reps are talking about just how important that aspect is, even in communities like ours. Like, in Acton alone, you know, we have 20, 25% are low-income. You wouldn't necessarily think that, but the numbers are higher than people would think. The incoming, you know, the, the current kindergarten class speaks 25 primary languages other than English. So there really is a need. I don't know what the numbers are in Concord, Carlisle, I haven't looked at those, but, you know, just as a parent in Acton, I hear some of these things a little bit more. So it's just really important for us to make sure we get that funding formula as right as possible. Of course, there are gonna be some negotiations, and it will go through legislation and all of that. But I think it's really important for Senator Lewis, I think it's important that he has said that they're, that it seems like they're getting close to an agreement, because, you know, the, the House and the Senate tend to take a little bit of time to come to the same page on a variety of issues, not just education. And that's typical in houses of government all across the country.
Because the ELL, for us, the problem is sped.
It's sped, yeah, yeah.
And we get some pretty involved cases coming here, and they choose us deliberately.
Got it, yeah.
We have a really good department here.
Yes, and so we, then it kind of ends up being an unfunded mandate for us.
Yeah.
It's not, yeah.
Yeah, well, and to a certain extent, I don't know what the conversation is here, necessarily. I hear about it a little bit more in Acton, Boxborough, but, you know, around regional transportation as well. And I advocated a lot for, for that in the budget process. We couldn't advocate for that around the education formula and the budget process, because we know there's a separate bill coming out. But wherever we can really advocate to make sure that we're not, that we don't continue with unfunded mandates, I think is really important. And there were a number of people who really spoke to, and were able to get a, I think, a small increase in the regional transportation budget, because the auditor did a study and found that, you know, the state's not really ponying up the amount of money that it's supposed to, and that it promised that it would, so.
And so does it have to go, is it a two-part process, where first of all, the, this joint committee has to agree on the change in the formula, and then it has to get passed by the legislature and then, but then, at the same time, does the, is there a separate budget approval that needs to happen to actually fund?
They would, it would be an appropriation, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that would have to happen as well.
And so does that gonna affect the income, the revenue for 2020? Is the expectation that this'll affect 2020?
So the revenue discussion will be a completely separate discussion later in the session, which would really, it would not impact the FY '20 budget. The earliest it would affect it is the FY '21, and even that, I think, would be maybe optimistic. I know there is some interest, both from the Governor and from the Speaker of the House, to raise revenue, and then on the Senate side, they have a working group that's, that's And then on the Senate side, they have a working group that's focused on revenue as well. I think it will take a lot of work to get people to come to agreement around what those revenue measures look like, and what's the goal of the revenue? Is the goal to raise money for transportation and education, which we know is really, we've been really underfunding? Or is the goal to address climate change, which is also a real major issue? And that's where the governor's revenue has really been more focused. You know, the Speaker of the House and his Green Works piece of legislation for climate change has focused on bonds, bond bills, to raise money for that. So I think there's different approaches, and I don't know where we will land. So that's almost like a separate, a separate piece. So they're going to need to find money. I think the question you're asking is, where is this money going to come from? They're going to, they are, we are, I'm not always used to saying "we are." We are going to need to find the money in current revenue that we generate, the millionaire's tax eventually, once it passes the legislature, two times, two sessions in a row. And if it passes at the ballot, then, you know, that's not even going to go into effect for, what, another four years at the earliest? And that has projections that it would, you know, raise the money to really support the funding and the transportation needs that we have. And, I mean, let's be honest, we had two T derailments in just a couple of days, and I hear over and over and over again about how inadequate the frequency of the train is. And I know that in Carlisle, you don't even have access to any of this stuff, and that there's, you know, some desire and need to be creative in some smaller vans and local transport and that kind of thing. So I think it's really important for us to just keep focused on these issues.
Did you know anything?
I just, I think mine, either a request or just to voice a concern, is as we're talking about the new legislation, and you've been talking about the unfunded mandates, I think one of the things that Carlisle is facing, it's something we faced ever since we first came into existence, was, you know, do we have enough to be a town? Do we not have enough to be a town?
Yeah.
We're a town, we're not a town, we're a town, we're not a town. Finally, we were a town. But we don't have any services in town that would draw any kind of business. You know, there's, you know, there's just nothing here that is going to make business come in and say, oh, well, they get lunch here, they, well, yeah, okay, because we have ferns.
Yeah.
And because of that...
I love ferns.
We're pretty much, you know, it's just residential.
Yeah.
And therefore, it's just the property tax that allows us to afford this.
Exactly.
And, you know, we find it, you know, we place education very, very high, but what that means is it's 75% of our budget.
Right.
And, you know, when you throw everything in there. And so what we're becoming is a bit of a town, and people move into town just because they want to send their kids to the school, and we're spending all this money on the schools, and then they move out. Yet we still have all these things that were decided. And it's driving the older population out of town, because they can't afford the taxes anymore.
Right.
And so I think a lot of times, Carlisle is just seen as this rich town that can afford it. But we don't want to be a town that's driving other people, fixed-income people, out.
Right.
Because other people can afford it. And so this is just the balance, it's the balance that we and the Board of Selectmen have all the time, is when we're putting our budget together, is how do we do it so we are not driving people out of town?
Right.
And so all these things the state is putting together, you know, yes, there are the Lowells, you know, there are the Boston's, but there's other towns that may be a different, a different makeup, that also have kind of a unique need that needs to be considered in order for us to maintain our character.
Right.
You know, we absolutely could just keep attracting rich people and with families and, you know, but is that what we want to be? Is just a town that has people that are just flowing through it and have no cultural background, no, you know, no connection, no community?
Right.
And that's what I'm afraid we're going to become with our current, at the current rate.
Right, yeah. I mean, it's a very real issue. I think a lot of rural areas in general face that. And I know, is he still here? You're still here. David Klein is still here. Back in, I don't know, February? February, we met at office hours to look at strategic ways that the state can help alleviate the tax burden on the aging population in particular, because this is obviously becoming an issue, not just in Carlisle, although I do imagine that it's exacerbated here compared to other communities because of the tax base issue. And that's a real challenge. And then just what are the kinds of housing options that would allow someone to, maybe they can't stay in their own home here in Carlisle, and maybe it doesn't make sense for a variety of reasons, the size of the house, the structure of the house, et cetera, et cetera, but are there other ways that they can stay in the town? And those are different challenges. Those are different challenges.
It's not, it's not that, you're still forcing them out of their home. You're still forcing them out of the home that they raised their kids in.
That's not what I'm getting at. What I'm just saying is having more options so they can stay in Carlisle. They may choose to leave their, you know, 1,800, 2,000-square-foot home, because they don't need to heat it, they don't need to, they don't have the capacity to maintain the cleaning that it's required, or the maintenance that's required, but they still want to stay in town. So what are the options that they can move to? That's what I'm talking, if they want to. I'm not saying push people out of their home. That's not what I'm getting at, no. I think it's really, yeah, yeah, you do need both.
I'd say in favor of trying to make, trying to figure out, are there ways that we can reduce the taxes of certain people, either, you know, of certain income and everything? What I worry a little bit about, though, is, does that just move the tax to the other people in town, and therefore, change the makeup for other people? You know, it's kind of like, I don't want to move that bar, so that now you're impacting other people, because you've just made it unaffordable for them. So it's just something you really...
It's the balance, yeah, it's the balancing.
Balance. It's not, it's not a one-size-fits-all type of thing.
Right.
You need to worry about the impact of what you're doing here. Now, you know, now we just increased the number of people that are having a hard time.
Right, exactly, yeah.
It's just, it's an easy problem.
Oh, it's totally easy, I know. Exactly.
And I think, me, I focus a lot on 40B. And it's a one-size-fits-all type of law.
Yeah.
Which does not fit all the communities, and it fits us particularly badly. And it's a threat only, it's another one of those unfunded mandates, like, you know, you have to do this, and it has, you know, it's on your dime, you know? And, and I think this is a badly written law, because if the people buy into this thing, if they're buying rather than renting, they cannot increase the equity of their house. So now they're stuck.
Yeah.
And they're much better off buying a cheap house in a bad community, honestly.
Right.
And get the, you know, the starter house, so that they can sell it and move somewhere, because if they buy a subsidized house, they're going to be stuck in that subsidized house for the rest of their lives. And I think just, that's a nasty law.
Yeah.
It's Latin, just nasty.
Yeah.
It's also particularly bad. We ran into this, we ran into this in our, in a recent one, where it actually ended up being bad for the developer. But, you know, every time something like that comes in, we really have to push on it. And it's not that we're fighting the 40B, we have to protect the health and safety of the neighbors.
Right.
And, you know, so with only having private water and sewer.
Right.
If you're putting in something big, and it's just, it costs us hundreds of thousands of dollars each time something comes in.
Right.
But we have to do it, because we have to protect the neighbors.
Right.
And, you know, in the past, we've, we have demonstrated how it was going to contaminate the wells.
Right.
And therefore, we structured things. But it's, it's just, I think it's different if you have public water and public sewer, then you can do higher density.
Right.
We don't.
Right, yeah.
You know, we have two-acre zoning, but we have two-acre zoning, it's not snob zoning. You need, you need to have a well and a septic, and what happens if one fails?
Right.
You need to have some other place.
And we have wetlands.
So what alternatives would you offer? Because we have, as a state, we are 160,000 to 180,000 units short of, how's, 160,000 to 180,000 units short of what we need to house everybody in the state. And it becomes a real burden for some of our gateway communities to constantly be carrying that, which is why I think the whole point of 40B was put into place as a way to carrot and stick simultaneously with some communities.
We can't work here. We have no transportation.
I understand that.
Concord, where they can hop on a bus.
But even in Concord, it's...
And hop on the train.
Right.
And have access to work.
Right.
We don't even have that.
So I still go back to my question, though, like, what would you offer as an alternative?
You can't do anything on a large scale, right? You know, 40B is about like a 10% thing.
Right.
Things that we've talked about are, you know, if there's a development, is there a way that we could potentially, like, buy one of them down? And that would add a unit in town?
Right.
Or maybe it would add two units in town? We're just not going to get to 10%.
No, but I have an answer for her.
And I have an idea, so I'm asking first, but I do have an idea, so...
What is, first of all, we have a decreasing population in our schools, and so we have excess capacity. So we could take in children that are not getting as good an education in and of their town into our schools.
Okay.
Which would increase the diversity in our school as well.
Right, and the state provides a certain amount of funding for student that comes in, this is like a school choice you're talking about?
Well, I'm saying...
That doesn't help with housing aspect.
I mean, I'm saying that this would be our contribution.
I think we'd have to really figure it out.
But I'm just, that's an idea.
What's your idea?
Well, my idea, and I have no idea how this would work, or how, if it's even feasible, but in talking to Carlisle residents during the campaign, one of the ideas that I came up with was, you know, does Carlisle pay into a fund that then allows the building of housing somewhere else? Right? And I know that that sounds crazy, because it's like, we're going to pay money to build housing somewhere else? But I think the whole point of 40B, and looking at trying to create some baseline of equity that everybody carries, you know, what kind of comes along with affordable housing, that that's really shared across the whole Commonwealth. That's really the point of it. So I don't know what other ideas there would be, but I would be really curious. It's almost like those pollution tax, yeah, it is like a carbon tax. I mean, it really is that kind of idea.
I just want to work out the optics of it.
Of course, that's why I said I don't even know if I really want to say this, right? Of course, but, but at the same time...
It costs $450,000 to start, and it hasn't even been improved. So that already, right off the bat, makes it unaffordable. So if we could buy land in another town and build it, you know?
Right. And there are some agreements that happen between multiple communities, like in Maynard and Acton and maybe even Stowe. And I don't know what those agreements are, but they each get like a certain, even though it might be cited in one particular community primarily, I think everybody sort of gets a little bit of credit. And I don't know how that works. I'm not a housing expert by any stretch, but...
We even had part of town that had public water that then got taken away, because they were connected, the people over on River Road were connected to Concord for a while, actually for a very long while, and Concord just cut them off.
Hmm.
Now, they had to go, they had to put in their own wells.
When did that happen?
About a year ago.
Really?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there were about five houses on River Road that were connected to the town.
I guess my desire is to try to be creative and trying to find what options, what options we could create, because I agree that there are ways that, you know, with state law, we're trying to create equity. And I think that's really, really important, and we don't want to lose sight of that. And it also is challenging when it comes to, then it creates sort of this cookie-cutter approach that doesn't really work for everybody. And I see it with a couple other different pieces of legislation as well, that it might make sense to just see if there's ways to be a little bit creative and, you know, throw things out and see what works.
To get past that optics of, well, we'll actually pay to put it in somebody else's backyard.
Well, the way you do that is...
But I think if, you know, there's lots of things like, you know, like, you know, we'd have to figure out, does that, does that take off the pressure of 40B developments? And, you know, because, you know, there's lots, I think we've even mentioned it before, well, what if we plot land somewhere where there is public water?
We actually did. Where there is, right.
It's the lack of public water that's a problem.
Yeah.
But if we start putting in public water for these, then we have to provide it to everybody, and that is a massive cost to the town.
Yeah.
And there's just no way we can afford that, because we're already spending 75% of our, you know, with benefits, health benefits, on our education.
How does 40B work right now in a town that doesn't have public water and doesn't have sewer? How does that...
They have to build a private well.
They have to do all of that?
And they have to show, and we, and we need to hire engineers to see if it's going to impact.
Okay.
That is one of the, that's the sticking point.
Right.
A big enough complex, they have to put in a sewage treatment plant.
Right. So does, you have one that has that, or no?
No.
No, okay. All right, you haven't quite gotten to that.
Benfield has that, doesn't it?
No.
No, they have a water supply.
Okay, oh, okay.
Which doesn't work.
Which doesn't work, yeah. Okay.
Sorry, it's like, all the, all the projects that have happened in Carlisle have been heavily subsidized, well, only one, I guess, was not. But all the other ones were heavily subsidized by the town, because it's just not economical.
Do you talk to other towns like Carlisle, and how they contend with this issue as well? I'm just curious, like through MMA or anywhere else?
Yeah, we, yeah, at the MMA.
Yeah. I mean, what comes up there in terms of their ideas?
And, you know...
They're very different. I mean, they have the points, it's not even close. It's not even close.
Concord is not even close. Our surrounding neighborhoods, but it's not close.
No.
So you have to go to Bolton, or, you know...
And what do they talk about there?
And they're not even that close, because they're on 495.
Hmm. Do you go out to, like, the Blackstone Valley area? Have you ever connected with any of those folks? That's probably who you're more, like...
We don't live in Carlisle, we're kind of amidst.
I don't blame you. It's a beautiful, beautiful town. I'm sorry I can't solve it right now or give you answers, but, yeah.
Oasis.
Yeah, no, it's a fair, fair concern. Do you have other questions? Other...
The high ones, and the hard ones.
Yeah.
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 So are you wearing Barney's name tag on purpose?
We're just playing a joke.
Okay. I did notice. Okay.
Caught her eye.
I was like...
I have a question for you about the professional licenser, licensure. Does that cover, like, childcare workers, teachers?
Yes.
It does, so...
I don't know if it would, well, so it depends, because sometimes things would go to education, or maybe children and families, it depends. And it's up to the clerk of either the House or the Senate where the bill was filed to decide which committee it goes to. But if it affects, like, licensing requirements, or expectations, or credentialing, it comes to the committee I'm on.
So do you know what QRIS, the requirements that now the state imposes, they always have, but they've upped them, on childcare, daycare workers, preschool?
Don't know if I've heard of this yet.
I'm just wondering if this covers it. Well, I'll just say there's only one, I think, here in town anymore, somebody that does childcare. But the state has imposed these requirements about qualifications, and, but they've not provided any money.
Right.
And so you have people working in the childcare field who themselves are paying public assistance, because they aren't making enough as a childcare worker, and yet they're being asked to go and get professional development, to, eventually, they want them all to have, you know, four-year college degrees.
Oh, my God.
And to pay for that, you know, there's no way they can afford to do it on the salaries they're getting.
No, of course.
So, I don't know if that covers, that's covered under this committee you serve on, or whether that ends up being in education, but it's a significant problem.
And I guess the question is, is that driven by any particular reason, or is those schools of education that are trying to recruit more students?
No, 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 it's about trying to make our early education programs of higher quality. And it may not, you know, in Carlisle, I think it's not as important, obviously, because typically, they're coming from families that can afford to give lots of opportunities to their children. But nevertheless, it affects the childcare workers in Carlisle, because it's a state requirement, these qualifications, so...
Right.
And the other thing that's happening is that those childcare folks, if they do actually get the bachelor's, they're going to go into the public school system, because they make a much bigger salary.
Right, yeah.
So they're having a lot of trouble retaining childcare.
Then they'll get a pension that goes along with it, too, or, like, long-term benefits. Yeah, yeah, okay. I'll keep an eye on that. I don't know if there's, is there a particular bill that's coming up around that?
Yeah, let me just...
Okay, if there is a bill that, yes, okay, great.
Some things right now.
Excellent. Anything else?
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, absolutely, I'm going to turn this back over.
Thank you.
We'll see you with Ferns in the morning.
See you on one of those Fridays.
Great to have you.
Yeah, and we're working on some of the Greenborough stuff, Greenborough, Reno.
Reno.
Reno Barn, oh, yeah.
And the DHCD and...
Yes, and the DHCD, yes. So the, so for the DHCD, the undersecretary was on leave and is coming back this month, And so we expect to hear back from them. They have never had this, as you know, before. So they don't know what to do, and so they're trying to figure that out before they have a meeting with anybody from Carlisle. They want to have their ducks in a row and not waste anybody's time. So that's what's kind of going on. It's because that undersecretary has been on leave for, I think, you know, three months for family leave.
So we should, we should just kind of stand pat until all this.
Yeah, and my aide, Emily Rogers, is, you know, on top of it and connecting with them. And yes, that's what's happening there and then.
Should the housing authority that was voted in, should they be meeting? Should they be sworn in? Because there was an election.
Yeah.
Even though the town voted to disan it, there was an election.
There was still an election.
Were three people, there had to be, right? Because it had to be on the ballot in case.
They weren't on the ballot.
No, they were write-ins.
They were. They were write-ins.
Yeah, but that still means they got elected.
Still elected. They were listed.
Do they have an official charge? I mean, does the charge need to be, if there is one, does it need to be approved at the state? Is that part of the question?
No, I mean, we have a housing authority and.
It exists until it's dissolved.
And so the town voted to dissolve it, but as we understand it, it can't be dissolved until the state says, yes, we approve the dissolution.
The town, the housing authority that we appointed voted to dissolve themselves. Town meeting ratified the dissolution. We had then an election with nobody listed as candidates for housing authority. Three people were written in for housing authority, so we now actually have legitimately voted in housing authority again, even though it's been dissolved. So the question is, is it is or is it ain't?
Has anybody asked Emily to check in with, or have you checked in with them to see if you should be meeting? Because I would guess, no, I guess.
No, I think council's opinion is that they can either meet or not. It doesn't, you know.
Okay.
If we're going to have a meeting with DHCD in the near future.
Yeah, I think it's fine to wait. Yeah.
Okay. To revote.
You all have interesting, interesting questions, I will say. I love it. It's great. I learn a lot.
Hey, Tammy, I want to. Yes, yeah, yeah.
Notice.
Tammy, I've got one last thing to ask you, and maybe I'm out of place here, because I'm the newbie on the Board of Selectmen. But are there things that we should be doing as a board? Yeah, okay. Are there things we should be doing as a board in terms of advocacy around particular issues that are before the legislature? And is there, do you have communication with, would you be in touch with any of us? Or, I mean, I don't know how that would even work, or whether there's been a relationship in the past. I don't have to work with Cory Atkins or.
Do you have a sense of how it worked with Cory?
If there was no.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, that's fine. That's fine.
We've been in touch with that.
I like Cory.
Yeah, and we've met. We celebrated Complete Streets. I think the way to find out a lot of what I'm doing and what's going on is to sign up for my newsletter. I know that sounds like a little bit of self-advertising, but it really is the way that you will know where I'm going to be, what events I'm attending, what issues are coming up. And, you know, just reach out at any point. I love this opportunity to come and talk to you. You're the first select board to invite me to do that, which is really exciting. I've been waiting to sort of get my ducks in a row up at the State House and really get sort of settled in before I start doing a lot of these, but I'm really happy that I was invited to come. And we can continue to meet on a regular basis and connect around whatever issues where we can be helpful. You know, where we can grease the wheels a little bit, like particularly with getting money released for the bond bills. Those are always challenging, and it's really the role of the state rep to really try to advocate for, on behalf of the town, to get that money released and going. Doesn't mean that we're the, sort of the straw that breaks the camel's back to get that to happen, but it's one of the roles that we play. And I would also say for, you know, people who might be listening, that really the, there are two primary roles of a state representative, to help pass laws and to help constituents in the town. And we've helped a number of constituents in Carlisle already, you know, with access to mass health and trying to navigate some of those challenging systems and bureaucracy at the state level. So we encourage anybody to reach out on those. And my email address is tammy, T-A-M-I, dot gouvea, G-O-U-V-E-A, at mahouse.gov. And I'll say it again. T-A-M-I dot G-O-U-V-E-A at mahouse.gov. And yes, I have all the vowels in my name. And my middle name is Lynn, so sometimes why.
Very cute. She's very cute.
Thank you, Tammy.
Anything else? No. Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
No, thank you very much.
Great.
Got an orange.
Wow.
Got an orange.
Hi, David.
Hi, David.
Hi and bye. Or if you're staying, we'd.
Missed community inputs.
Yeah, I did miss. I've met with her a couple times, so I.
That's great.
So nice to have.
I'm not fully walking out the door when she walks in, or while I walk in.
Do you want to finish?
Yes, I would like to finish our appointments. We're so close to being done.
Okay.
Okay, we're at the Municipal Facilities Committee. I thought we were.
We did.
Long-term cap?
And land stewardship.
Oh, sorry, long-term cap. I.
Oh, no, no, no.
Land stewardship, we did.
We did that. Land stewardship, yes.
Good.
But long-term caps. So I must have been filling somebody else's slot, because my appointment to long-term caps expires this year. And also, my address is Carlton, not Charlton. There's no H in it. And I guess I'm the Board of Selectmen candidate. Is anybody interested in going to long-term caps? Leaving me on long-term caps?
How often do they meet? If you don't want to do it.
Three times a week.
Just going to go back here, eat my orange.
Okay. I'm, I mean, I'm certainly willing to stay on it.
Yeah, how often do they meet?
And I have to say, it's, because I'm, well, am I still on, and I, okay.
You're the liaison.
I'm also.
I'll be on long-term.
You want to do a long-term caps?
Sure.
Okay. So we need to. Where's your letter? Yeah. Nathan.
Can I have my pen back?
Okay, and we have a new, oh, what happened to her? Okay, Sarah, Sarah.
Wilson?
Wilson.
Oh, it's going to be the school committee rep?
Will be the school.
Good. That was my question here.
Will be the school committee rep.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to appoint Nathan and Sarah.
Does anybody know Sarah's address?
Oh.
It's, yeah, it's Grant Wilson's, that's Grant Wilson's daughter.
Oh.
Whatever, that, what's the name of that street?
Is it Clark Farm Road?
Yeah, Clark Farm.
Yeah, Clark Farm Road, I think. Right?
And I'm 153 Virginia Farm Lane.
Okay. Do you want me to do it? I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint to the Long-Term Capital Committee for a term of three years. Nathan Brown of.
153 Virginia Farm Lane.
153 Virginia Farm Lane and Sarah Wilson of Clark Farm Road for a term to expire in, at the end of June 2022.
Second. The school one is 2021.
2021, yes, because she's just taking Josh's.
Oh, I see. She's, oh, gotcha. Okay, because Josh is gone. Oh, I see. Okay, so do you want me to, can you just change that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
2022.
Nathan's 2022 and she's 2021. Okay.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Okay. Then we have the Municipal Facilities Committee. And again, I took somebody's slot, I guess.
Mine.
Yours. So I either have to be reappointed or we have to find somebody, some other sucker to take this.
This is one that you wanted.
Yeah, I think I want to stay on this one, because, you know, it is some advantage to having some history on this and not have to learn it all from scratch. So, and there's a lot of overlap, by the way, between this and long-term caps, so, but anyway.
If you want to be on long-term caps, you're welcome to.
No, I think it's healthy to have it be this way. Okay?
More than one person.
Yeah.
Yeah, know what's going on.
Yeah.
So that means the only, since two of these are vacant.
Yes.
The only, do we, have anybody interested? No, we don't.
Okay.
Well, we have the two non-voting.
Please reappoint me so that I can get sworn in, so I can continue to help with the quorum until we get some other people. I think that's important.
I need Carlisle Board of Selectmen appoint Kate Reed as the Board of Selectmen representative to the Municipal Facilities Committee to a term to expire 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Okay. All right, we'll talk about, and then we have to talk about a bunch of things. Pathways 2 is going to be come Complete Streets, no? Yes?
So I don't know. I think.
Be representative on.
Yeah, there should be, there should be a Pathways rep on Complete Streets.
Okay, there's still going to be two.
Still going to be a tone.
Two separate things.
Pathways 2, what is their charge at this point? Because they were to present how the remaining funds might be spent.
So the next phase that they're.
Oppose another phase, which they've done.
Right, yeah. So basically, that, the next phase that they're looking at is, yeah, the extension from basically Kimball's down to, not necessarily Rivers, River, well, I guess it's River Road, right?
Which is likely only to happen if we get the developer to help support it.
Well, there's, yeah, there's the portion from Dan Gainesborough. Then there's also a grant application that will be going in. So I actually, I spoke with Melinda, was it yesterday? Day before?
And this is not part of Complete Streets?
No, no, it's a different application. So that application is due August 9th. So we're going to get kind of rolling on that.
Okay, so let's reappoint Pathways tonight.
Oh, yes.
And we won't worry about the extra vacancy.
All those people want to still be on?
That's true. That's, do we?
Well, they're not on the list of people who don't.
So, yeah. But, no, but I was actually, I was talking with Melinda, and I don't think Stacy and Nancy want to be on it. So maybe we should get an update from, we can get an updated list from Melinda. I mean, ultimately, I don't think they're going to meet before our next meeting.
So do you want to hold this till the next meeting?
We're going to hold this.
Is that what you're thinking?
And then, Jen, that's your.
When you said, Sandy Nash is saying she may not want to do it?
Yeah, I believe Melinda said both Sandy and Nancy didn't want to be on it anymore. And then Deb moved out of town.
Right.
Yeah.
So just leave Melinda and Pete.
So you're going to, yeah, a couple working together on it. Are you going to?
They may, or they may not.
That's why I was wondering if they shouldn't just be rolled into Complete Streets.
Yeah, I mean, that could be, yeah, we could consider that.
I mean, Complete Streets have paths on them and stuff.
Yeah, but that'll go away as soon as the grant's up.
Right, yeah. The idea with Complete Streets is that implementation, right? As opposed to, you know, designing. I mean, you can.
We can always change that. I mean, we haven't seen a draft of that yet, have we? What the Complete Streets is going to look like.
That's in our packet.
Yeah.
For the, for the.
Not the bid. I'm talking about the committee.
The charge, yes.
Yeah, I sent that the other day.
Oh, that's in there? Okay. I missed it.
So Luke, are you, are you trying to recruit some new people for this?
So I think, yeah, so I think I'd actually like to be on Pathways. And, yeah, speaking with Melinda, I think we definitely have to get some new people. So she had a couple people in mind. I have a couple people in mind. So, yeah, I can, I can reach out to some folks and we can see, hopefully, you know, we can get a couple of spots filled.
So when you say you want to be on it, do you want to be appointed to it or?
Yeah, not necessarily tonight, but.
Oh.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, we don't have a Board of Selectmen rep, but.
Yeah.
What's up?
Okay. All right, okay, so we're going to wait on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Recreation Commission. First of all, the positions to be filled is, it should say, one member with a term expiring June 30th, 19, right?
Mm-hmm.
Andrew McMorro, and it doesn't say that we have an application on file, but he did. Okay, so can we please appoint that?
I move that we appoint Andrew McMorro of 250 Acton Street to the Recreation Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All the members on the Senior Tax Advisory Committee. Of those members, both Barbara Culkins and Walter Hickman are willing to stay on the Senior Tax Advisory. And then the others are all staff, so we could just go ahead and reappoint the whole thing.
Yep.
I move that we appoint Bonnie Fleck, Treasurer's Tax Collector. Melissa Stamp, Assessor's Office. David Klein, COA Director. Angela Smith, Resident in the COA Assistant Director of 158 Martin Street. Barbara Culkins, 9 Bedford Road. And Walter Hickman, 249 Concord Street to the Senior Tax Advisory Committee for a term of one year to expire June 30th, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? None. That's, again, done. I think we can appoint the Trails Committee tonight. We have two members whose term is expired.
Why is Steve Tobin down here? Isn't a, oh, two of them, sorry. Yeah, I move that.
Wait, isn't he one that didn't want to be on anymore?
Oh, let's see. Where's that list?
That was, he didn't want to be on the Deer Committee anymore.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint to the Trails Committee Steve Tobin of 164 Partridge Lane and Alan Ankers of 83 Pheasant Hill Lane for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? None. Veterans Committee could be appointed tonight.
It looks like they all expire.
Yes, all one year, but there's only one applicant?
And that was actually crossed out.
Two.
Mine only has Christopher Eisenbees. Oh, I've got the whole different thing.
There was an update that was on.
Oh, in here?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
You can get back here early.
Gotcha. Okay.
Oh.
Don't worry. Got it.
All right, so here.
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint to the Veterans Committee Christopher Eisenbees, 420 Heald Road. Greg Fairbank, 102 Captain Wilson Lane. And Tim Nickerson, 1177 Curved Street for the period of one year to expire June 30th, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous.
Nobody doing it.
That's a good reason.
Nothing to do on the next. Nothing to do on the next. We are done, except for the ones that we didn't do. But that's not very many.
Hey, that's good, though. Great.
Okay. Now, we are at our.
Nine o'clock.
At nine o'clock, eh? Not too bad. 9:07. Update about Selectmen's Policy Number Five of.
Could I suggest an alternate way of doing this? Would it make sense for us to, at the next meeting, go through what all the policies are and assign them to different people, and those people can go and talk to people and make edits to them and bring back proposed edits rather than editing them in a Board of Selectmen meeting?
I'd like to talk about them before we assign them, because some of them, maybe we just need to toss and we don't need to have somebody do a lot of work. So you, for instance, have already volunteered to take the Policy Five Transfer Station stickers.
Yep.
But I still think, you know, really, the Board of Select, you have to get some basic information, but it has to come back to this board to discuss about, you know, are we going to raise the sticker? Are we going to have other policies?
I think it would be similar to anything we do, where people, you know, we ask people to do things and then they come back with recommendations.
Yeah, but I'd rather we discuss it so that they know what our goal is before they go off.
Well.
Well, here's another one.
Decide on a case-by-case basis, depending on what the policy is.
You know, you're certainly free to go through the policy book and see which ones you think need to be done and bring them, you know, I just, I, we can't do it all at once. I'm trying to go through the ones I think are, you know, really important to do at this point, because they haven't been looked at since 89. Before.
So I would say that a policy regarding computer email and internet use should be changed into what's called an information security policy. I'm surprised it's not required of us, of our audits.
I think it's been on there, right, hasn't it? Every year?
Yeah, it could be, and I'd be happy to take that on. But I think, you know, that is information security policy. It's part of a standard technology compliance thing. This must go back. I have to actually take a look at this, but.
Where did this draft come from?
There was no date on this.
This is something that takes with the technology, was working on, but it never, it was dropped.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a draft. I think, have you had a chance to read this draft?
I think I wrote a lot of this draft.
Oh, okay. So you already think that it has some run time, it's already.
It's already five years old.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's a lot of duplication of it.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, email as opposed to.
Well, not only in one place it says you can't do this, and next place it says, except when you do this.
Yeah, yeah, okay. In fact, and then there was another one where I said you, it's for non, use of the town's computer network for non-governmental business purposes prohibited during business hours. Use of the town's computer network for non-governmental business purposes prohibited during business hours. And it's like, why not prohibit it, period? I mean, why would, after business hours, you can use it for, you know, playing video games? Video games? What does that mean?
I had marked up a copy and I thought I brought it with me, but I didn't.
Oh, okay. So.
So what do you suggest, Nathan?
Well, it's fine, somebody, but I think it's more than one person going off and doing it. I think we have to have a couple of people going in and discussing it. I think the discussion at this table tonight is, do we want this policy to cover this?
Yes.
Is this the sort of thing, or is it, should it be tighter? Do we need to have it also, you know, reviewed by Town Council, for instance? Are there drafts elsewhere that we could be starting with instead of this draft? I mean, what? And who is interested in pursuing it?
Well, for this particular thing, it's just a very standard format that you use.
Yeah. Every institution has one.
Okay.
I'd be happy to steal mine from work and adopt it too.
I can do the same thing.
Well, how about you two talk about it? You both seem to have access and interest.
And expertise.
And expertise. And I would like, you know, that's your thing.
Okay, we'll do that.
Because Nathan, when do you think we'll hear about the Transfer Station stickers? Because you said you would take that on and we're going to be seeing the trash people and Gary on the 25th.
Right.
Yeah, but they would be also a place where we want to ask them, what do they think? Unless you've already asked them.
Bins are going to be too small.
They'll add more.
Need more of them, which is a good problem needing to be done.
No, exactly. By the time we get down there to cut the ribbon on Saturdays, one of them was already full.
I was looking at this as a summer project, not that it has to be done by two weeks from now.
Okay. Well, no, it's just that we're meeting them with them, so would like to have them involved in the process.
This is more about, this isn't about household recycling. This is about the Transfer Station stickers, right?
Right, but we're going to have people...
Would like some input from them.
We would like to have input from them.
But you know, I don't mind reaching out to, is it really Gary Davis and then the...
And the Household Recycling.
Because I'm the liaison to Household Recycling.
Gary's actually on that committee. That probably comes as a surprise to him.
Well, they have been talking, they've been talking with him fairly regularly.
Okay.
So would you like me to reach out to them? And if you want, Nathan, I can check in with you and you can see what advice you have for me.
I never discourage anybody from doing anything that they're willing to do.
Okay, and the specific policy?
To move the process along.
Yeah. It's going to be in here somewhere, right?
It's in there, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Town Administrator, no, sorry. Collins Center Report on Organization Efficiency of Town. Page 41.
Before we do that, can I just make a suggestion on the policy guidelines and review? Policy and guideline review? I think it'd be helpful if you could select the ones you want us to review. That we got them more than, you know, a couple of days before the meeting.
I have a memo already written, which I wrote to Tim, where I said which ones I thought...
Yeah.
And we've just been stepping down that memo.
Yeah, which is great.
So I'd be happy to see, see.
So maybe, I don't know if Tim or you or Jen could, you know, the next two that are due to come up, send them out earlier, just so people would have a chance to look them over before, more than a few days before the meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be great. All right, Collins Center, yeah.
Yeah.
Succession.
One of the major recommendations was to identify critical managers and employees who are nearing retirement age and begin the transfer of knowledge and skills to hiring employees at lower levels to work with these individuals. And the question is, how, I think we all agree that this is a good goal to try to shoot for. And the question is, how do we get to that goal? What steps do we need to take in order to get there? I mean, we have some positions in the town which are not under our direct control because they're under somebody in other elective boards' control. However, they're in our controls insofar that our town assistant is the Personnel Director and he needs to have control over the personnel in town. And how do we manage all these pieces?
Well, I think we should have a policy that staff, that is town employees, are under the direction of the Town Administrator.
No matter who they...
No matter who they are.
Which board they serve.
Correct.
I don't think we can just do it that way. I think we need to make, we would need to make Tim a Town Manager. Which is a fairly significant shift.
There are two different job descriptions?
It's a very different job description. And so, I mean, it really, it, you know, Tim, you could probably speak to it more. It's like the difference between Concord, where the Town Administrator basically has ultimate authority over a lot of things.
You mean the manager, he's the Town Manager.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, he has a lot, the Board of Selectmen lose a lot of their authority in that case. It's kind of like a strong chief and a weak chief. And a Town Administrator are different things.
Is that a state regulation or?
Tim, why don't you go into it? Do you know more about it?
Well, you're right, a Town Manager is a much stronger position, you know, in terms of administration and authority. You can strengthen the Town Administrator's position through a bylaw or through a charter change, a home rule amendment. There are ways to do that, but you're right, it has to be in writing somewhere. It has to be a bylaw or codified in some fashion.
The question, let's ask a fundamental question. To whom do these town employees report?
Right.
Yes. And why?
Yeah.
Well, I think for the most part, they would say they report to their elected boards.
What about Board of Health?
When they, when they need something from the town, they come to me.
Okay.
Otherwise, they consider themselves somewhat free agents.
Do these boards understand that? That the page staff report to them?
I think some do.
Well, some do because they consider themselves the hiring authority for, you know, if they were hiring a new administrator, they would feel that that was their...
And is that?
Not the Selectmen.
And is that, is there a town bylaw that says that?
It's not, it's not referenced really, it's not by law.
It's just tradition. I mean, it's just kind of the way we've always done it.
Right, yeah. I mean, I think we can operate as if that's already existed. I mean, I don't mind, you know, working with the departments to try to create a more cohesive organization. In the study, they, which was five, six years ago, the average age of the department age is 57. Well, nobody's getting any younger since the study came out. We need to think about succession and the number of areas, and also reorganizing.
So, does it mean that we need to meet individually with the other boards that have aging employees and discuss this with them?
I think it has to happen at that level initially, yep.
So we have two decisions to make, I think. Number one, we're going to keep it the way it is. Where the accountability for the staff rests with the board to whom they are support, or they are their support. Or the accountability lies somewhere else, such as with the Town Administrator. And I think that's, if it's the former, that's fine. But then we have to make sure that those boards and committees are held accountable for the kinds of things that we need to have done, such as succession planning.
I don't see how we can.
Hold them accountable?
Yeah.
I mean, the really hard thing is, it's kind of counterintuitive to like the policy that Kate distributed last time, which is, you know, somebody can only be a chair once, you know, no successive chair. And so I think, you know, it's hard to have people, staff, report to a new person every single year. It's just, there's just no consistency. I'm fully in support of it going, you know, to being, to Tim. It'd be interesting to see maybe if Tom knows of other towns that do it without a Town Manager and how they've structured it and maybe what their bylaw might look like or something like that so that we could kind of get some ideas before we start meeting with the groups. I think we need to know what we would kind of like the outcome to be.
I mean, for instance, if discipline was necessary, who would do it? Who's responsible?
Nobody at this point.
I can tell you how a library does it.
Okay.
We have just had a situation where not discipline, but a firing was necessary. The Board of Trustees hires and fires the library director regardless of age. And the library director and the library assistant director are responsible for hiring the rest of the library staff. Those two people report to the Board of Trustees.
Okay.
Well, that's kind of very similar to what we were just talking about.
Yes, yeah.
If it was Tim. What we need to do, though, is get to the point where all those, the rest of the library report to Tim. Not saying it's the library, just using your example.
But all those employees follow the Samarian wage chart that's established by the town.
That's right.
Personnel Board, Personnel Administrator. And they follow the personnel policy and the personnel bylaw that's administered by the Personnel Administrator, which is me.
I can tell you, I don't even, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's a part of onboarding or what, but I can tell you, when I first started on committees, I would get some of the people who supported that committee calling me up and they'd be telling me about like what was going on and what the problems were. And I'd be sitting at work and I'd listen, I'd talk for an hour. And I'd hang up the phone and I'd say, why did I just get that call? All of a sudden, one day it dawned on me, they report to me. And nobody had actually told me that before.
I had the same issue on boards that I was on, my first volunteer position here.
Nobody told me that these people report to me, that I'm responsible for mentoring them. I'm responsible for discipline. I'm responsible for making sure that they have what they need. Nobody told me that.
Which is an untenable position because you are not on the ground and really have very little way to give them what they need.
I'll call Tim.
And also as a...
I think we should short-circuit that then.
There's got to be a lot of pushback from some of the boards.
Maybe, but I think we should have the, we should not shy away from the conversation.
I mean, we can have that conversation. If you're not going to do the job.
Yeah. To look at some forms of organization.
Vanessa looked into this and she was just told it was Town Manager or nothing.
Well, yeah, it's a middle ground, but still involves change.
Right.
Some boards may not be willing to match.
Well, and I would recommend that while we look into it and figure out what the possibilities are, at the same time, we try to be collegial in working with the board that has a person for whom we need a succession plan. And we should do that, follow, so just be very specific about, is it, whatever it is, two or three boards where there's somebody in a critical role that we know is going to be retiring?
Like all the boards.
Well, but whatever, we, let's pick out the one, two or three that are priorities and be working with those boards, or at least the Chair of those boards, to start saying we need to address this and we need it to be done, you know, in a concrete fashion.
At least start having conversations about when do they think they're leaving?
I don't think you can legally do that.
Yeah, I've already had the conversation with Sylvia and with Angie and like they know it's coming. But ultimately, so I guess I want to go back to just a little while ago too. So like when I got on the CONSCOM, literally my first meeting with Sylvia, when I met her, she's like, you're my boss. I was like, okay. And, you know, and certain boards, I think, take that to heart and other boards don't. So, you know, I think we need to make sure that every board fully understands that. You know, like you said, you came in and didn't have any idea. Right, but ultimately, you know, it really falls on the Chair, right? And typically, the Chair is somebody that's been on the board for a little while. But it's this whole chicken and egg thing because you report to, or your administrator reports to you, but as a board, you rely very heavily on that administrator. So, you know, you really, you know, I mean, and, you know, I just, my experience is working with Sylvia and Sylvia's fantastic and, you know, you can push on Sylvia, she'll push back, sort of thing. And ultimately, you come to the solution that makes the most sense for the town, right? I mean, she's just fantastic in that way. I don't know if every board is like that. I would like to think that they are, but I don't know. I mean, I haven't been on every board. So, yeah, well, right, exactly. And that's the thing. And, you know, to Nathan's point too, though, you know, with boards changing over, you really never know what sort of mixed bag you're going to get. You know, I do think if we change Tim's responsibilities, that five-year contract that we just signed becomes obsolete. But, yeah, I mean, I think, but I think ultimately, the issue that I'm kind of bumping into with CONSCOM is not really an issue, but the confusion is, where do we even start, right? And I think, you know, like in CONSCOM's situation, for example, my whole thinking was that we can't afford more than two positions, right? So how do you have a succession plan, you know, with a current administrator and a second position, right, but still maintain, you know, the current position, right? So then, right now, there's the administrator and then basically an assistant, right? You can't really put a third person in there because it's going to be a significant salary that the town can't afford for three years.
Person currently in the assistant role is not in a place to be considered to take over.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
Right, it's unfortunate, but I think, right, and I, you know, and I think ultimately, what has to happen is, you know, we have to have that, it has to be a larger discussion, obviously. But I think in most cases, that second position really needs to be like a true assistant to the administrator and somebody who, you know, can really fill that void when they're out of the office and is, in a sense, being groomed into that position. Whether or not they'll stay, who knows? But at least, you know, that transfer of knowledge is there. And, you know, I mean, it'd be unfortunate if somebody resigned and then the other person left. But I think, you know, if somebody comes into that position, you know, it's like any other position, right? If somebody comes into that and you say, look, you know, there's really, this is your long-term, the long-term goal and then we bring somebody, you know, I think, I think the mindset in, you know, people who work in town government is that, you know, you want to stay at a place of long-ish time, right? So...
I think there's a second issue as well. And that is, the system that we have, and it may be, well, that's one we keep, it creates the silo effect. This board is an entity unto itself. The people who work for that board are entities. There's no cross-training, there's no cross-coverage. We're a tiny little staff here.
Yeah.
And it really handicaps what we can do.
Yeah, right.
And if we had a more coherent personnel management system, it would certainly at least allow more cross-training and more communication. Lots of things that we don't get under the current status quo.
So what if instead, well, let me, oh, sorry.
It is directly related to something I said before. I think most people said you can't. I'd like to ask Town Council. I believe that for the purposes of planning, you are allowed to ask if, when somebody plans on retiring. I just looked it up.
Okay.
I've done it. I believe that you can. Do you mind asking our Personnel Council, I forget what he's called?
Labor Council.
Yeah, okay.
I believe that you can because you can't, you can't, you can't be tied as a company in planning. You can't force them to retire, but you can ask them what their plans are.
What if they say, I haven't decided?
Then that's fine. Because you can't force them to retire.
Right, exactly.
But you certainly can ask them when they plan on retiring.
So what if we attack this from a slightly different angle? And instead of changing Tim's job description, we enhance his position as Head of Personnel. We beef that part of his job up to give him, because right now, he has responsibility with no authority, which is an untenable position to have.
Story of my life.
How am I living on the Board of Selectmen? That's why it gets back to, I think, just finding out what other towns do.
So that's why I'm thinking if we could give him more authority as the Personnel Director.
Right to his head.
Well, and I think part of it too is, you know, it's the elected boards too versus the appointed. You know, I mean, the appointed boards shouldn't be an issue at all. It's the elected boards.
No, it's not, it is not the appointed boards.
Yeah.
But which ones are not elected? See, we have, CONSCOM is appointed. Okay, so that one's not a problem.
Health is elected.
Health is elected. And you can ask yourself, why is health elected? But anyway.
That's another discussion.
You know, a lot of these things are not, these are not uniform across towns either, you know? Planning Board is elected. In Concord, it's appointed by the Selectmen.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
Maybe that's because they have a townment, I don't know. But I mean, you know, maybe we need... But I mean, you know, maybe we need to look at our town makeup and how it's, because it's pretty difficult to run right now. So it's, we're not going to solve this tonight.
We just get Tim a very big whip.
But we, I think we need to start thinking about how we can do this.
But in terms of moving ahead on any specific places where we need to do a, we really need to have the discussion.
Yeah. I mean, we do have a status quo and we should be dealing with that unless we change things.
Yes, so what's, what are the next steps then following the status quo for those places like CONSCOM?
There are, there are at least, there are at least a few.
We're going to find out first.
Yes. I think it all starts personally. I think it all starts with making sure they're instituting performance reviews.
Yes.
And part of performance review is professional development and knowing, you know, where, having a discussion, what do they want to be doing, where do they want to be going, what are their future plans? It's all part of that process.
Okay, that's.
And, you know, it was on our goals last year and we didn't get to it, but I think ensuring that every employee has a performance review that has those sections in it is the starting point.
And is that, that then is the responsibility of the board to whom they report?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's whoever their manager is.
Could I ask a favor? Would you please rewrite the performance review? The one that's there has been in place four years. It doesn't address those very issues, except in a very oblique way, and it isn't tailored to each of the positions. The library fills on it four years.
F O R, not F O U R.
And we all do it and we get together with her and we talk about it. And we were told on several occasions before your time, Jen, that we were the only board who was doing it. And I talked to a couple of other board chairs and they were saying, it's a badly written thing anyway.
I think on his time.
So why do I say every day?
That's in the personnel policy?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Do you know about this?
That's being, that's being reviewed.
Yes.
You're talking about the form.
Yeah.
The form itself is outdated.
It's outdated. And perhaps that's the purview of the Personnel Board and not the.
No, is that under the Personnel Board?
It should be.
The form is, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, which is another.
So we're going to meet with them anyway.
Oh, yeah, it's in law before.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
Yeah, because part of it too is that, that, you know, if you are developing a succession plan, right, and you want that second role to potentially fill that first role, you want to make sure that second individual is happy and going to stay.
Yeah, yeah. And is getting the training they need to feel like they're going to be able to take over the job.
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah.
So it's definitely a critical piece, yeah.
Okay, well, I think we're.
I think, right, so just, so the action items from this, because that's kind of what Barney was trying to get at, yeah, the action items would be that you're going to discuss it with council. And I think first things first is determine exactly what we could do with.
Legally?
Legally, right, with, you know, elected officials and now a potentially underpaid town administrator. And ultimately, what role you could fill as an administrator, right? I mean, that doesn't need to be necessarily a manager.
Yes, as an administrator and I think also as the Director of Personnel.
Yeah, Director of Personnel. And like I've already had, started the conversation with CONSCOM. Right, obviously, planning and Board, Planning Board and Board of Health are the other two, right? I mean, just throw it out there. Who's the planning, are you the planning board?
I think I'm planning board.
Yeah, so maybe that could be just an initial discussion. I mean, you know, Pete certainly knows. And who's it now, Todd? Is Todd the chair?
I don't know as of the new, as of the new year, I don't know.
Yeah, so maybe that's just a, you know, an email that needs to be sent, you know, just, hey, this is something. I mean, he must know too. Not to scare, so.
And then what about the Board of Health? Who's that?
Yeah, so that's Alan.
Alan, okay.
Yeah, and at least toss it out there. And then, yeah, because there aren't any, David's not.
And then, did you say about the performance review to pull that up?
Yeah, and then the performance review, sorry, yeah, 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 sorry, I was thinking, I know there was something else.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I mean, I don't know who else, Nathan, I'm sure your company does it, but these 360 reviews too, so not only do you get reviewed by your manager, you get reviewed by your peers. And I think that's important as well, you know? And usually, the person throws out four or five people that, you know, they would like to have review them, but ultimately, you can pick anybody you want. I mean, usually what I'll do is, you know, I'll pick a couple on the list and then go with a couple others that I know they work with. You know, and then you usually get a full perspective, you know?
And does it also include a self-evaluation?
There's always a self, oh, I hate those. Yeah, yeah.
They're terrible.
Yeah.
Yeah, self-evaluations are tough. But, but also too, then, you know, I mean, unfortunately, like everybody gets the same cola, right? So you don't ultimately get the benefit from that.
Award.
Right, yeah, yeah, but.
Super performance.
Right, but.
Well, that's how it's been done in the past, we don't know.
It doesn't have to be done that way.
You know, on the road, we, if we get this up and running and we get these reviews and there's somebody who's clearly outstanding.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know exactly how that would work, but anyway, but with the performance review, yeah, it's definitely, I think, something.
We used to just take, we did the 2% pot, then we divvied up.
Yeah, well, that's right, exactly, yeah, I've seen that before.
There's always, yes, yeah.
And we did away with percentage increases.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Which only rewarded the people who made the most money.
Right, yes.
Yes.
Who usually got that part of the pot first.
Yes, yeah.
Damn it.
That's true, that's true.
You academics, you.
Going back to a comment you made, Nathan, about the policy about, you know, chairmanships rotating, I think we need to talk about. See, that's the kind of thing that I'd like, that maybe we'll put on our next agenda. Is that a policy we want to have, you know?
I think it is personally, because I think, I think that that's what makes it a more rounded board rather than just always being driven by one person.
I agree, okay. I thought you were bringing it up for the office of reasons, that's why I'm asking. Oh, okay.
I think it also, it also will lead to less burnout.
Yes, there's that.
And more knowledge among the board members. A whole lot more of chairmanship.
It's a form of succession for the boards as well as for the, for the succession for the boards as well as for the employee.
I wasn't dissing the policy about the switch, I was saying that that makes it hard for the people that report to the board.
Yes, okay.
Because their manager changes every year.
That's true.
But if we change that, yes.
But that's why if we have the manager, if Tim is actually the ultimate manager, then they're not being kind of jerked by the chain, you know, all the time.
Yep.
So then that means that we might want to be starting to enforce that.
Enforce.
Change over the chair.
Or not enforce it, but you know.
I think we do try to enforce it, I just think there's some boards that, you know, unfortunately.
Nobody will take the job.
They're unpaid volunteers and you can't force them to do it.
No.
Like, you know, I was on his comm for five years, four years, and nobody, you know, once Sylvia got off, nobody else would serve as the chair. And so I was chair for three years in a row because nobody else would.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, I mean.
But, you know, maybe you do something like, I've been on a number of boards, actually the sort of the way we're doing it here, right? But you, we encourage these committees to change their, the way they're set up so that you have a chair and a vice chair with the understanding that the vice chair is going to be taking over from the chair, you know, so somehow you structure it so that hopefully you can get a volunteer to take that beginning level, knowing that over the course of three years, they're going to end up being the chair.
A lot of them do have vice chairs, like his comm had vice chair.
Yeah, and just never wanted to take over the chair.
They'd take it over if I wasn't there.
Guess what they thought the job was?
Ken Grady and I had this thing that, you know, whenever I wasn't there, he can't, the meeting is perfect.
The library has a problem with that because there are only three trustees.
Yeah.
One of them has to be the chair, one's going to be a treasurer, and the other one has to be a clerk. So what we do when we take people onto that board is we simply say, we rotate these positions every year.
Right.
And it's just, that's how we do it. So there's never, there's always a different chair, but it's a small enough committee so that there isn't a problem with the director having to deal with a different chair every year because we're, all three of us are always there.
Right, right.
So if you do rotate the positions as Nathan suggested and you act collegially, make it work.
Can we move on to town administrators?
Yes, I'm ready.
Good discussion, though.
Yeah, I think it was. I think we need more of this kind of stuff.
First item in my report, once again, the proposed Complete Streets Design Contract, Niche Engineering for the Complete Streets Projects, this was on the agenda last time, you're not going to bring it back. Well, you asked to see the final contract, which Niche almost provided to us yesterday, so I understand that you don't want to act on it this evening and you need some more time to review it. That being said, they'd like to get going on the project with if the board has questions or guidance or anything in respect to the contract.
Do we know, I mean, we have, we have a dollar amount assigned there. How do we know that that's a reasonable amount? I mean, was it competitive?
Well, three firms were asked to give proposals to the Complete Streets Committee or working group, whatever status, they recommended that Niche be gave by the town.
Do we know what the other bids were?
Yeah, so it was, yeah, Niche, Niche and Tech, they both came in around the same. So Tech was the one that helped us through the entire process. And then the third one was Stamsky. And the committee as a whole, and I think we even had this discussion here.
Yeah, we did.
Agreed that Stamsky really wasn't, they were significant, well, not significantly lower, but they were lower. But, yeah, that committee felt as well that Stamsky just really wasn't qualified. So we went back to, I think Tim went back to Tech and Niche and said, you know, sharpen your pencils a bit, you know, kind of bring everything, you know, closer to exactly what we asked for, and they did, and they were what, a couple thousand dollars off.
Okay, all right, that's all I read, I just, there was no, there was no information about that in this anywhere.
Oh, okay.
Here's the contract.
Yeah, 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 so, yeah, Niche, I think Niche was a tad cheap, were they a tad cheap, or maybe they were, maybe they were.
A thousand dollars or something cheaper than.
Yeah.
They were comparable bit.
Yeah, exactly. They did throw in a few more things, like stormwater.
Landscaping.
Landscaping, right.
Sure.
Right, yeah, there were a few things that, the only other thing was that they had fewer hours for the engineer on site than Tech did. But I mean, basically, in the grand scheme of things, it was very close.
Okay.
They looked very similar in terms of the way they specked everything out. And, you know, we've had experience with Niche in the town before, they are the planning board.
Peer reviewer thing.
And did somebody, did somebody check with council, right? That's not, it's a non-issue to have them do this, so.
Okay, just wanted, I missed, you know, I had no information. You get something the day before, spend $65,000 without any, somebody's actually worked on this previously.
Yeah, no, it's actually a good.
Okay.
Well.
I move that the board award the Complete Streets Design, Land Surveying and Transportation Engineering Services Contract to Niche Engineering in the amount of $64,500.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that unanimous?
I don't think the Center Park Agreement made it into the pack at least.
No.
No, it didn't.
So I'll bring that back to you. I did talk to town council, you made some changes to that, I'll bring that next time.
Just to remind you, because I looked it up, the item nine was, you know, if they decided they couldn't do it, that was all, it was going to go back to DPW.
Right.
That's that, that was the thing.
Item number three, the Caroline Hill Scholarship Committee, they do annual recommendations for distribution, $10,000 in scholarships to, well, it's not just high school seniors, there's college students as well. And the memo recommends distributions attached.
Yep.
It's the 2019, 2020 academic year, it's correct in motion, it's in the paragraph. We've been doing this for a while, too.
I move that the board approve the award of $10,000 in scholarships for the Caroline Hill Scholarship Fund for the 2019, 2020 academic year to be dispersed as recommended by the Caroline Hill Scholarship Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate those.
Don't do it just yet, though, because they send a letter and I made that mistake.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just going to say I'm congratulating the scholarship winners.
Yeah, I congratulated.
I wasn't going to read it.
I congratulated a neighbor of mine and I was like, ew.
They changed all that, they used to have, you know, we recommend these students and these students, we don't recommend get any money.
Oh, gosh.
Oh, really?
That's mean.
We sent it to them, neither.
Oh, gosh.
So. Item number four, also attached to my report, you'll see an application for one day wine license for Clark Farm Market for Saturday, June 15th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. We had a number one day events, pass or three licenses for those events, suggestive motion.
I move to approve a one-day wine and malt beverages license to Jeffrey Freeman or Clark Farm Market pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 14, for an event to be held on 201 Bedford Road on Saturday, June 15th, 2019, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Rain date is June 16th, subject to the application providing applicant, providing a host liquor liability insurance certificate and contacting the police department to determine the necessity of a police scale prior to the event.
Second.
Second. I have a question. Do we need to put this, this is about the police detail, if the police chief has already signed off on it? Isn't that what they've done?
They've consulted with the police.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, that's fine, you can leave it.
At this point, yeah.
Right, because I have asked in the past that it not be dependent on that, that they already have that.
Police chief sign off, police detail required, no. 29 May, 2019.
They've already done that, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, okay.
Okay, and then item number five, you're actually voting on.
Did that.
Oh, yes. Inauguration declaration, it's been a lot of preparation necessary for the elevator. And then we've got the upcoming proposal time schedule, and I still only know when when Barney's going on vacation, so anybody knows what your plans are, you know?
Yeah, I'm going the same time as Barney, I'm going the ninth through the, whatever the file, seventeenth. Apparently Barney takes longer vacations than me.
That's right, because I'm older, I've burned it.
Oh, you've burned it, oh, I haven't heard of you. Well, maybe one day!
I'm on it, I'll be December 31st.
And I may not make the 25th, Maggie has to travel for work now. So I may not make that, I don't know, so if we can get a sitter. Either way, I'd have to leave early because I don't want to spend $2,000 on a sitter, but...
This is car wash.
Yes.
Okay, good. Tell you what else, no, so besides the next few days, let us know.
Okay.
And I think that's all I had in the report.
Well, hold on, Tim, I hope you have a really nice vacation, you're leaving soon.
Yes.
And Jen, you're also going on vacation soon, so...
Yes.
Who's holding down the fort?
Waterless.
Yeah, we're going to get away in the same period too.
Yeah, there you go. Well, so Alan's also going away, so there won't be any trouble.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
On the minutes, right, don't we have to do the liaison reports? Or they, what is the, yeah. I would like to report that I did go to the meeting of the trustees of the library as the liaison last night, and they were very well-run, well-organized, and very informative. Because I just want to clarify, are there liaison assignments that are in here? They're done now.
Those are done, somebody has an objection. That's what we discussed at the last meeting.
Okay, and you heard no objections?
I didn't.
Okay.
I think, well, I think what's happened is that Jen had made note of, you know, the horse trading that we did, and that is now reflected in this.
Okay.
So if there's a mistake in there or that we didn't get it right, let us know.
And are those committees and boards informed now of who their liaison is?
No, I don't.
Okay, great.
Just to add, which one of you to their emails?
Right.
Okay, great, thank you.
So before I ask for a motion on the minutes, I'm going to ask for any, normally I give my changes to Jen before the meeting, but I was late this week and only met them before the meeting. I have some, some questions about the minutes. Does anybody else have any questions about the minutes? Okay, my questions refer to our discussion of the review of the Collins Center Town Organizational Study Recommendations, and there is one, so that page where there's the strikeout text on it. First of all, on the Board of Selectmen should assess the potential of strengthening the position of town administrator in order to consolidate their daily supervision over operations and performance of staff. It says completed. I don't know if it was completed since we discussed it again tonight, so I would have called it ongoing. And then, then two down from that, the town, all that's strikeout, I don't know why it was in strikeout.
I meant to get something.
Okay, so it should not be in strikeout, I think. And it says not completed, and I, and rather than not completed, I would say it was not supported.
Yeah, yeah, because that was a recommendation, yeah.
Okay. And then, so aside from one other typo, that was, that was basically what I had. So now I would entertain a motion.